Good evening. I have many important times meeting. There's so many things that we need to be scheduled as well. The October board meetings will be held on October 13th through 27th. November, we'll have one board meeting scheduled for November 17th. Those meetings may be called if necessary, but the board trustees being there. I'd like to inform you that Leo Stiller has resigned from the environmental advisory board, effective August 21st, 2022. Mr. Stiller is a member of EAB since 2006. We'd like to thank Leo for volunteering his time and talents on EAB for the past 16 years. Thank you very much, Leo. Two weeks ago, I appointed Deputy Mayor Tom O'Brien, Trustees Marciano and Torino, to be in the House of the Mayor of St. Paul's Committee to interface, observe and report to trustees on the status of the efforts of the St. Paul's Committee. I've been several of the other trustees attended some of the committee work sessions to observe the extraordinary efforts by the subcommittee members. All of the volunteer residents have spent hundreds of hours to conduct research outreach, prepare drawings for the potential damp reuse phase of St. Paul's building. This is a tremendous effort undertaken by a group of dedicated experienced residents. The next phase of the committee's work will be to review the potential for demolition. I would now like to continue with calling out the department heads, beginning with Mr. Jackson. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor Diddy. I have number 11. I'm asking for order authorization for an application of police officers who is acting within his scope of duties and functions as a police officer. I also just want to bring up, there have been several incidents in communities north of us about burglaries and hallosities, but with burglaries, it's getting darker earlier now. And the experience is the burglaries start happening around that six, seven, eight o'clock time, when people leave the house temporarily and the lights are not on. So please be cognizant of that. Make sure your lights are on, TV on, any of the others that you have on. Make sure your lights are changed to coincide with the hours of darkness. And I think that will go a long way in helping to secure your residents. That's all I have next.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Swasey, can I ask you something?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Trustees, the fire department has nothing on the formal agenda. I'd just like to give you guys an update. For the month of August, we had 87 total alarms, 79 of which were signal aids or lesser alarms, zero general alarms, six mutual aid calls and two extrication calls. I'd also like to thank the Board of Trustees, the department heads, especially the PD and Parks Department, and especially the residents who attended the 9/11 ceremony this past Sunday. Even with the weather, we had a very strong turnout from the residents of the village. And we appreciate everybody who showed up, so thank you. Do we have any answering questions anyone may have?
You did a very good job at the ceremony on 9/11. Thank you.
Thank you.
I echo that. Well done. Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And next, is those who interrupt me now. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. Under finance, there's one item on the agenda, item number one. And this is order authorization is requested to appropriate $91,323.47 from the reserve for concated accesses for four employees who have left Village Service. And that's all I know on the agenda tonight.
Good evening, Mayor. Board of Trustees.
The building department does not have anything on the agenda, formal agenda tonight. But if the board has any comments, questions for the building department, we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Recreation Commissioner Paul Blake, I think he's on Zoom. Paul, are you in there? I'll skip over. We'll go to Anthony DeRosa.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. Public Works has quite a few items on the agenda tonight. Item number 15, I'm asking for approval to attend the Nicon Public Works Training School in October. This will afford me the opportunity to develop my professional skills and to interface with my counterparts all through the state. Operating funds have been budgeted for this conference. Item number 16, this approval is to engage H2M to provide professional engineering services for the design of a maintenance facility at the Clinton Road site to house AOP equipment and supplies. It costs $48,200 and funds are in the capital budget. Item number 17, this approval is to engage H2M to provide professional engineering services for contaminant removal at wells under 15 and 16 for $78,000. Funds are in the capital budget. Item number 18, this request is for transfer of funds and ratification. And it's to abate ACM floor tile that was found under the carpet tile for an additional cost of $31,681. This is the new village office space that construction is taking place right now. Or the village office business office. Item number 19, this request is for H2M to conduct the National Accounting Health Department required semi-annual inspection of the village's five water storage tanks for 2022 for a total cost of $17,000. This will be operating budget. Item number 20, this request is to increase the amount of the capital project and to transfer $63,000 to library fire alarm systems. Capital project from general fund to fund the amount needed to award the project and to award the project to Inteltech Security for the amount of $192,580.52. Item number 21, this approval is to transfer $48,600 to building's contractual services from contingent to fund the cleaning of St. Paul's building and to approve the proposal submitted by Islandite Contracting for a total cost of $48,600. Item number 22, this approval is to transfer $10,000 and to approve and accept the rates for drafting service. Rates are as follows: drafting will be $30 per hour and rent re-35 dollars per hour. And to be provided on as needed basis, not to exceed $10,000. Award of bids, item number 23, Cedar Valley and Meadow Street Sewer Pump Station renovation, 2022, transfer of funds from the American Rescue Plan and ARPA to increase capital account and award bid. Order authorization is requested to transfer $340,000 of ARPA funding for this project to increase the sewer building repairs pump replacement capital account and to award the bid to WHM Plumbing and Heating Contractors for items number 1, 2, 5 and 7. They were the low bidder for a total cost of $735,000. Item number 24 is Garden City First Floor renovations. Authorization is requested to reject a bid from Sherwani Contracting Incorporated. They were the lowest bidder and they did not meet specifications. We also are requesting to reject the remaining bids as they were over the budget allowance. And we would like to redid the project. 25, oil liquid caustic soda. Authorization is requested to award a bid to Univar Solutions. They were the lowest bidder and it's to be ordered on an as needed basis based upon a unit cost of $1.99 per gallon. Budgeted amount for both liquid caustic soda is $56,000 and is charged to operating budget. Item number 26, directional drilling. This request is to award a bid to Island Directional Drilling. They were lowest bidder in the amount of $59,400 for work to be performed on an as needed basis. This is also on breathing. Item number 27, fire hydrants and repair kits. Authorization is requested to award a bid to Ferguson Waterworks. Sold bidder for a total cost of $74,879.80. So also be charged to operating budget. Item number 28, streetlight maintenance. Order authorization is requested to award a bid to Danse Oregian Electric Incorporated. This is actually anchors electric, so we just did the project under another name, their other business name. And they were the lowest bidder and it's for routine monthly maintenance for a total annual cost of $93,600 and for an estimated cost of $100,000 for various streetlighting points to be ordered on as needed basis. This is also charged to operating budget. Supplemental agenda, Mr. Swasey.
I'll go for the supplemental agenda and the long mayor, or you want to get down? Okay. So, good evening, everyone. There are three items on the supplemental agenda. The first is the permanent building construction for the water contamination treated at wells under 7, 8 and 12. This is located at the Water Works Plant Site at 11th Street. When the AOP project first came on the radar in late 2018, it was broken up into two phases for the early adaptations of AOP treatment. A temporary structure followed by a permanent building structure, which is needed to house these things for safety and security and for winter operation. These were competitively bid. The lowest bidder asked me to give it to Wade Construction Corp. For a total amount of $3,125,000. And the electric part goes to All Trade Enterprises. They're also known as Bank of Alaska in this town. For $1,307,211. This is funded under the capital project for both well 7 and well 8 and 12. Numbers 2 and 3 on the supplemental agenda. Number 2, I'm asking the board to create a new capital project for the packed tower aeration services, engineering services by H2M. This was not contemplated at the time we did the budget. The packed tower aeration, these are also known as airstrippers. At the Clinton side, we have well 10 and 11. The airstrip at well 11 failed just before the pumping season. We had it repaired and made it through the season. It is recommended that by H2M and by our water plant operators that DCT do replace it while we're on the use line. Well 10 is of the same vintage. This is to replace the blower, build a new building which houses filters. The old ones that are there were prefab buildings which were inserted between the tower and the water tank. There's no room for men to go in there comfortably when you change the filters. So this is a new project. The total project is about $530,000 and plus the $117,300 for engineering services, about $675, less. So I want to award to H2M $117,300. So I'm asking you to create the capital project for $675 and to award the engineering services to H2M $117,300 to resolve the building's immediate close. The third project is the orthophosphate corrosion control treatment project. I'm sure the village is aware. We've sent down manholes, talked about the EAB meetings, talked about the board meetings. There is an issue with lead service lines and lead plumbing in the homes in this village. Although the water we put out is tested and is lead-free and the water manager highness is lead-free. There was a consideration of orthophosphates to be added to our water supply. This is a treatment that is used around the country. It is EKA approved. It is safe. I have, I do have some information on the Zoom tonight. Questions come up about orthophosphates. I'm asking you to create a new capital project for $350,000. Asking you to create an urgency declaration allowing us to bypass we had the bidding process so that on board three, you can award the both, also to Philip Ross Industries at price of $339,500. Those are the three supplemental items. Any questions?
I have a question on H2M. Have you been able to call this from the engineering firms?
No, not on this one, sir. They've been, they've been our engineers of record. They, only with the site. Every time I have gone out, almost every proposal we do, except for few on water, when I go out and I test the field, H2M has time to time incoming as lowest bidder we've awarded to them. I do test it. I feel with the water situation and the manner of the AOP process and design and our work leadership or our kind of rate is, I would not like to spend the time going out to save a couple of thousand dollars. In fact, they might come out higher. I did not.
Were the actual contracts were paid, correct?
Yes, all the, all the work is, all the work's being bid out. That were assigned, the permanent construction at well Waterworks site for buildings in 7, 8, 12, we definitely did. The electrical, we definitely did. And the, the wells 10 and 11, I don't know whose time we'll have between now and design, but I might ask the board to bypass competitive bidding on that because these have to be constructed prior to the next pumping season, which gives up right around the morning then.
So there's an urgency for this?
Definitely urgency. Six months later, we're pumping water normally gallons a day. The other six are downs to two or three, and that's all work finished. It's sort of like your rest of school system, you know, the structure you're doing this summer.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Can you go back to Paul? He's asked if he can speak. Go ahead, Paul.
Before you, you want to do any questions on our mayor?
Let's hold on, Paul.
Do you have questions on this issue?
On the orthophosphate, you had said bypass the competitive bidding, but I thought I saw on the attachments that there were three bids and you were going with the low bidder.
Right, so what H2M did anticipating this orthophosphate is something that they put a design engine and help allocate to expedite the process. They went out to three companies who are qualified to install this and got competitive pricing for it. And so it wasn't actually a bid, it was a lowest proposal.
I understand. Thank you.
I think for the health and safety of the residents regarding all of this equipment, that's why I brought it to the board's attention.
Any other questions? Okay, Paul.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees and everyone in the audience. Apology, as I'm having some technical difficulties here at the ranch. I'm creating three items on the agenda tonight. The first one is number 12, the renovation of the miniature golf course. Frank and to authorize Alex and the Clean Association to do a survey of existing areas that we did agree this. And you'll remember, we had a bid on this that came in for the brick construction of the golf course that almost doubled what we had anticipated. So thanks to Anthony and John Brody, we have come up with a plan where our village forces will do most of the work on this job and we should be able to bring it in under budget. Number 13, the extension of the shade structure for St. Paul's playground. We did circulate this to board about 10 days ago. We have been talking about putting additional shade over that playground for quite some time now. We have designed it. Everybody seemed happy with. And between the new shade structure and one additional Japanese cherry tree that we're going to put in there, we think we should have a good solution to the shade issue. This is being purchased off of a source well purchased in cooperative contract, which means it has already been competitively bidded. And Skyway's landscape structures, here's the little bit. And this would be for $47,911.31 and that's in our capital budget. And finally, we are requesting attendance at the World Aquatic Health Conference for myself. This is a conference which will allow me to recertify as an instructor of the Certified Pool Operator Course. We are required to have certified pool operators on staff. My being certified as an instructor allows us to be some of our members to send them to classes and spend additional time. And since I am participating in an instructor assessment school, my fees for transportation, blocking and admission to the school will be picked up by the Pool and Halt Up Association. That's all we have on the agenda this evening. And I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Jerry Fishberg, you have anything to proceed?
I'm good. Thank you, Mayor. I have two items on the agenda. One is in connection with a build-out by Cablevision Fiber Optic System. They've sought an access agreement where they can put a terminal alongside the public works facility to Cherry Valley Avenue to house certain equipment to facilitate this new system. The agreement has been reviewed by me. It will require that the cabinet be shrubbed. That Cablevision be required to maintain that shrubbery so that it's not really what we would be seeing. And secondly, I have a license agreement that we've been working on with the owner of 1200 Franklin Avenue. And this is the licensed property to the west of the building, which was the Lord and Tila Building. That license agreement has gone through a couple of different changes and revisions. It's on for tonight, but we really don't have the agreement back signed by the landlord. But I understand that the attorney for the landlord's here today who may want to address that topic. Thank you.
Thank you. If you have any comments this time?
One question, there have been a request by residents if we could do the public hearing before the comment section. I don't know if there is a decision on that.
I was going to go to the agenda items.
Are you? We've called. I know residents have been here a number of times on this issue.
So let's get into that. Let me, let me open that up. It's beginning tonight, the public hearing will be drawn to the proposed resolution to discontinue a portion of Houston Road north of the eastbound side of Main Avenue. Do I have motion to open the public hearing? Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. The board of trustees, any comments? I think let's hear from the residents first and then comments after that.
Mayor, if I could clarify something. If in fact, the village closes that portion of Houston Road, there's a requirement that there be a public hearing and that the village must find that that portion of the road is useless with, you know, under the circumstances of any kind of redo of that area. And this public hearing is only on the issue of whether that piece of Houston Road should be closed off. It really has nothing to do with any other aspect of that project in and around that area. It's only, it only has to do with the closure of the road at that location.
I guess one comment, just by way of background. And for those who know, we've had a number of meetings where a plan has been proposed to connect the two islands, to add green space to help mask the view of the new station and the monster coals. And I think it looks like a great plan. And in this plan, once this is implemented, it would connect the two islands and the attachment, which I think is only attached. It would show, you no longer need to cut through. This area would not be needed as a roadway because you could churn. At the, you know, there would be a different traffic pattern created around it. It would give a significant opportunity for additional landscaping in the area.
It should be in your agenda, the latest drawing that has been done. Excuse me, an original drawing. Is that being officially officially?
I mean, I mean, I have no question. So, just to apprise the board and the public, a version of this plan was shown in the brief at July 21st meeting, which is my birthday then, when you call that.
Get it the other way.
And then the EAD team meeting, it was again discussed at the time. Trustee Chester and the other trustees had asked how long would it take to sort of finalize this document, this construction document, or this cost. We asked for five, six weeks. We only had about a week. One of the, one of the things that would keep us from going from the early concepts that Mr. Roth and Bell had first created and that we turned into a concept was that we didn't have the intelligence survey. The Third Track folks using engineering firm, I think, Santec, had done a survey of the, of everything here, the curves, utilities, sidewalks, very detailed, tightly measured stuff. And we obtained that on Friday last week at 3:00. And I want to compliment Mr. Gennaro and actually John Brody, who's here this evening as well, for putting the time to try to create what we see in terms of the watering yard. One surprise that we had, probably the only real surprise we had was at the area that we're talking about in the public meeting tonight, the cut through at Houston Road, which is between the eastbound Main Avenue, westbound Main Avenue. Has on the yard, we received that three utilities running through it. There's a sanitation, a line in the middle. On the east side was a water main. On the west side was a national grid gas main. This would actually run contrary to the idea of closing of the plant because the plants, the kind of trees we're trying to use to block the lights over these utilities. Nonetheless, we went to verify. Our water department didn't believe there was a water main there. They toned it out this morning. They found no water main north of east main. But they did get some readings just south of it. They dug a hole. There's, there's nothing there. That's good news. So that main is eliminated. The sanitary sewer line is an eight-inch line which takes water. In the event here, there's water in the bottom of the elevator shaft, new elevator shaft, there's a sun pump which will allow water to drain from that elevator shaft down into this drain into a sewer. And on the west side, there is a boiler which is part of this snow melt system. So when there's ice and snow on the platforms, the boiler heats it. Any condensation from that will go into the drain as well. So that's what the purpose of that sanitation line is. It's not carrying heat, it's just basically a very expensive drain. It'll be dry most of the time. The national grid main, the national grid main dead ends, it goes through the cut through to the dead ends right after the curve in the westbound lane. It's a six-inch gas main. I've contacted National Grid, our lady is on Alice Kushner. He has transferred my questions over to their construction group who works with the Third Track group. What we've asked them to do, and we know the main's there. We have to verify anyway. We asked them if they could bring it back south of the curb into the east main and if it could get tapped into the boiler by going west and north, thereby getting used to the mains. That's a decision they have to make and it's a cost we don't know about. So we are, we're making every effort to, to clear the way for closure and what's expected and that's all I have to say at this time.
When you did this survey, that survey information, do you know the depth of these utilities?
The depth of the water main, if it was there, would have been about five feet down, but it's not there, so it doesn't matter. The sanitary sewer line is about four feet plus or minus. And the gas main, I don't know what they're traditionally, about five feet down. And the gas main, I don't know what they're traditionally, about five feet down.
Did you speak to them about capping their main? I think you said you wanted to...
The main is already capped, it's a dead end. What we asked them to do is, because the intention is to heat the boiler room, they're going to run a line west on the westbound lane and then go into the boiler room. What we're asking to do is bring the stuff back below the cut-through and then go west on the eastbound lane and north past the second island, achieving the same result. Or we also asked them if there was another gas main west of this location that they could tap into for the boiler and then just bring the stuff down. So it's really, I don't know their infrastructure, but they do, and we're asking, Alex will get back to me. I did type in an email, asked him early, I memorialized an email today. He immediately got back to me and said he sent it on to the construction group. I expect to hear back early next week.
To your study, to your study of curiosity, have you been provided with any documentation or any estimate with regard to the outflow of the condensate? And how much that would be upon being used, the reason being is, is an alternative to construct a drywall and not use the drain for that particular purpose?
So the, I don't think the, I don't think the outflow is expected to be too hard. They originally wanted the six-inch by, by recall, we made them to eight inches. I think once this project closes out, we take control of all that sanitary connection. So we talked about that today, actually, we bounced it around, could we move it? So it's definitely a possibility, a possibility, yes.
Did you say you wanted to get the maintenance?
Yes, we know, retain the line and the grant.
That's their line.
They would own the line.
Service the line on the road, boiler, but we have to maintain it.
Mayor, when it's tied into our system, we need main, they can't touch outside of the system. So we maintain.
National Grid, we sent the sidewalk just up to the, off the road.
Is that right? Would we just own the piece going from the sewer main to the pipe on the sidewalk? Could we all get it from the sidewalk? It's in the road right now, so we don't know. In the road, we don't know anymore.
The problem you...
Just addition to that, I'm sorry, I just, I'm sorry. I want to add that, once we received the survey, we would be able to, we were able to determine the sidewalk. So the estimated cost of the construction of the road and everything else was about $700,000. That didn't count for the sidewalk. The additional cost to that 700 is $150,000 just for the sidewalk itself now, part of this plan. So that brings our cost to about $850,000 to $900,000 as far as executing this plan here. We don't know right now how much the sidewalk may be part of their plan already, how much we... So there's some give and take depending on...
Can I ask, so is that through the landscaping or just the...
It does not, it's only scripty road work and sidewalk. So the landscaping would be additional to this part.
But it doesn't, the sidewalk has to come from where we, isn't that property?
There's a small portion that they have to provide us with, and maybe that portion could be given back to the benefit one, I'm sure I'd like...
When you say small portion, how much?
As far as the new footage, I have engineer John Barone here, maybe even Roda. It was 8,000 feet, as I recall. 5,000 square feet of sidewalk.
Just one thing to clarify, because I know this, the gas line line just came up recently. It's my understanding that that would have to, the plantings would have to, assuming the gas line stays there, would have to work around that in choosing the plantings and spacing them.
Right, so the gas main doesn't negate the concept of planting. If you have a main, a utility main, you would have to leave three feet both east and west of that, north and south, for minimal. So you have a six-foot gap where you really can't plant anything with deep roots. But having said that, most of the plantings out there are not right on top of each other, and you can plant substantial trees with big canopies to succeed in blocking the light, so I don't think it's a...
You can't plant on top of the gas main.
No, you'd have to plant east or west of it.
I'm pretty sure about that.
We don't want any plants on any of the mains. We don't want this being planned on any utilities. The rule of thumb is, don't plant anything on utilities.
Right, but you can still...
We'll have to relocate, or I can't...
You have to locate these, oh, you have to locate them and plant, right? Not only the depth, where they're located exactly, and you can determine which you can do with the road. Do you need this information? Soon as I may.
So where the, the road is now, if we close it, where the road is now, that pathway, would we be able to plant it around it?
You could, I would suggest if you close it now, you plan, to join the islands, you put grass there so it's a constant green, but you cannot put any trees within three feet of that gas main and three feet of that sanitary sewers. You have a, in the six-foot part, you only get a 12-foot swath you can't plant in right now, which is less than the 20-foot swath that's there now, so...
There were, there were some ideas with the sidewalk, having it go down the middle, which would be that six-foot area we're talking about, and there into the side. And I'm not an engineer, there are some engineers here, they've come up and talked, please feel free, but that's an idea to alleviate the six-foot situation I'm talking about.
I think we are going to hear from our resident engineer, of course, that's all the time to this.
I have a follow-up question before. Give me a second, please. I just, I want to be clear, so is, if we close the road, how much will we have covered? Because we're trying to block the lights, right? And then my follow-up question is, the Long Island Railroad had promised to give those lights first, so I'd like to hear what the update is on that.
I'm trying to be respectful, what Mr. Fishburg said, but the, on Monday, according to the last email I had from either Mr. Passball from PTC or Mr. Farno from the railroad, they had favored a baffling system, so the light, the light that's there, they were putting a baffle in front of it facing south, angling the light down about 20 degrees so it will not be going down into the neighborhoods. They sent me, they sent me light charts before and after, but I didn't want to, it's not something that showed the public, but basically achieves, I believe, that we've achieved a disinfectant. Plus, you know, I don't know what it looks like, but I, the way I was describing it is that it's part of the solar eclipse, but light doesn't wear 100%, it's not glaring, I didn't have the sun. So that's the idea of a baffle, to shield the light from the neighborhood. So that's, that's one thing. As far as your question goes with the gas main, I don't know if this is just a rule of thumb or absolute, but if there's a main there, the main is eight inches, that's the old line in the road, you gotta go three feet to the right and left, so that's six feet. But there's also a sanitary line between the, in the road, so that's really six feet apart from the gas main, pretty much. So another three feet, so it's three, plus the six I saw, and plus three on the left, so about 12 feet to the gate.
12 feet wide.
That's a lot.
12 foot swath.
How far?
That's just about the size of the road. I live right there.
I don't think the road's that big. The road might be 20 feet.
Maybe 18 feet. But the, if I could just, so having lived right there, and the lights are a problem, of course, but it sounds like we'd have to look at it to see what we can do here, right?
Yeah, one of the things in drawing is missing, because Mr. Barone's going to work on exact dimensions and handle those physical casualties because he just wasn't the time to do it. But the drawing, you see, the lines, the islands, these are precise, these are exactly where they are. The central diagram probably shifted around a bit, so parking spaces that allow or absolute outside the central.
Should we have an idea for length of these pipes? They go into Houston Road, where are they going? Pipes, are they branches or are they stubs?
The sanitary is brand-new, it's coming north of South, so it's a main, and the national grid is a stub. I don't know why it's there, but why they stopped where they did, but the...
The sanitary is from the elevators, is that correct?
Oh, they did for the boiler, that heats the platform.
So they don't expect a lot of water?
No, I suspect that the snow season is probably anywhere from 12 to 20 days in bad winter. And the, I don't expect the elevators to have a lot of water in the basement, there might be some storms that produce water and get in there, so I think generally July most of the time.
They have sump at the elevator.
They have sump in the elevator.
So that's going to pump the water.
That's a solid...
Yeah, well, it's going to pump the water, but not...
Yeah, I don't know how often, I guess there's no rings.
So you actually didn't count, do you have a suggestion?
I, Mr. Kushner couldn't comment to me, but he did pass it to the disruption crew in five minutes of my speaking. I did call me to stay and describe it to him, he has been following the email, which didn't get to today. But nonetheless, if it can be done, I also, just for everyone's education, I did call Mr. Passball and told him of what we were thinking, and he has no problem with them with the boiler and the gas connection from a different location, so he's, he's happy to cooperate and, and work with us.
Paul, just a quick one. Paul Roth and Bell, 216 Kensington Road, Garden City. First, I want to compliment that this drawing is a major improvement over what we've had in the past, it's very good. Compliment Mr. Quasi, only worked this afternoon, was excellent on taking a look, find out there is no water main, concept of the gas is good.
I could have told you if I wore my golf glove, the ball would have gone.
I just want to point out one thing, dealing with the landscape architect as well, actually landscape foreman, one of the things that we need on this project...
You look forward. Yeah, thank you, my thing.
One of the things we do need with this project, and it's maybe a lucky break, but the gas main is right here, and we're doing a proposed walkway, so I think we can combine it to the walkway and then on top of the gas main and not have a problem. And it fits pretty nice, and particularly with the water being there, it works very good, actually. I don't think I'm going to comment on the other, I'll just say about closing on the street and everything, but you know, generally we do need a crosswalk, and that's within a couple of feet of where it falls. I agree with the concept that you said before, Mr. Quasi, about the trees going over it. There's also, speaking with the street hall people, we can get some trees that keep the roof on an upper level rather than going down, and so that would be probably silly would help us on, you know, picking and correct shrubbery to go there. But that seems to be a fairly easy fix. The problem, even a better fix, if you could move the gas line and you don't have to worry about it, you wouldn't have the drawing you have up there right now.
Just as far as the gas line being moved, National Grid's a lot of work in this community, and we have a very strong relation with them, and always had cooperation. For them to just move along like that is probably going to cost a significant amount of money. I can't guess what it might be, but anywhere from, you know, it's a half hour, half a day job, 10, 20,000 dollars. Thing is, I think the community benefit fund can be used for the same purpose, because it's part of the overall playground construction, so I asked them to give me a dollar figure. I also think it only adds about 30 feet to their gas main, which should still be within their jurisdiction as far as connecting freely to that line.
I'll do a little more editorializing before I sit down, just the, the one thing about the lights, in the railroad, the promise case has never been, but you would think that it would be fairly easy to shut the lights off during the day, we have only had that the last four or five years. Lights are on 24/7, and that's a disgrace. I'm sorry, it is, they should be shut off during the day.
Paul, just to ask, the sidewalk would basically cover that gap that we have, because we wouldn't plant over the gas main.
Correct.
Okay, so that would leave the problem of having to plant over the, of the gas main.
Right, just three feet on either side.
Three feet on either side of the sidewalk. So you're talking about 12-foot gap between the islands that you would need? You would say six...
It'd be less than that if you don't, if you do something, if you do something with the supply, and if you do something with the gas, it would be a problem.
Yeah, I want to look at, say, with Trustee Chester, I did notice that the west island, the one on the west connecting to the east island, the last four feet are concrete, so even without moving the island, you can take that concrete out, the dirt there. The drain has to be moved, though. I talked to engineer Barone about that, too, because the water has to, the water's pitching away from the track on the south, so we have to put drainage up there, probably in parking spaced areas, right? But that, you know, there's a lot of small things you can do to facilitate the extension of the dirt area if you didn't close the road, because the gas main grabbed off the curb. But if you put a sidewalk there, and instead it's five feet wide, or six feet if you want, you still need the three, three turn in the side, the clearances.
We still need a couple of 12 feet.
I know you would have, in that case, you'd have the six-foot sidewalk, three, yeah, you still have 12 feet.
12 feet, yeah.
You always have, you always have, if you put a six-foot sidewalk in there, the gas main would be in the middle of the six feet. If you put a six-foot sidewalk in there, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have to, you'd have to be very precise, you wouldn't have to put another three feet, because the gas main's only eight inches, or six inches. So the sidewalk would take apart in three feet in other words. It's a six-foot sidewalk, three, it's only maybe a foot on the side of the sidewalk.
So you couldn't plant on those three feet on either side of the sidewalk?
No, as long as you make things three feet from the main, so, I was saying, if the main's this thick, you're out of it, you're already out of parts of it, you're going to stay from the sidewalk.
I think it's my understanding that the purpose of this is only to have this resolution to deem the small portion useless so that we can pursue this connecting of the islands, so I would think maybe we could, these other details of how we're going to work around whether we'll be able to move, I don't think that needs to be hammered out to move forward on the, the resolution for tonight, which I think is an important one, and as many know, this has been months and months of discussion, and we're, there are time constraints, so I don't know if anyone has any other, we don't have to...
One more, one more consideration, just that, I'm an engineer and I'm told that it doesn't work, but I actually believe that landscaping helps with sound, and that's one of the complaints that we're getting from the neighbors still, that with this new structure, it's now 12 cars long as opposed to eight or 10 cars that it was before, it's elevated significantly, and the sound is worse. And the shrubbery, in addition to the islands, will help cut down the...
Of course, Paul, there's no planting there now. There's no planting, there's no any substance goes down now, so that's why you have the whole course. Once you do the planting, right, as we did here.
I'm on the same page.
Yeah, but again, they'll, they'll modify the landscape planting.
Do we have a modify?
Based on this, yeah, we have.
We will, we want to get a final drawing of what we need.
Well, I think...
For the last 24 hours.
Yeah, if I can just step in, we just got the, got it on Friday, and John Barone worked all weekend, which you sent me to bring this to our attention, right? My recommendation, Paul, was you've done an outstanding job volunteering on this movement in four hours, to continue to collaborate with Giuseppe and John and readdress it so that we can get a good look, because this is a brand-new revelation to us. And I think that between, you know, you and them, we can come up with a good resolution.
I think you're over 95%.
Good, yeah, let's get to 100.
Is that, is that survey?
But this, I thought the concept might be what we can block.
Yeah.
Well, my concern with blocking off the road is if it doesn't block the lights, it's, what if we spend all that money? That's, that's my thinking.
Are we sure we get survey information captured?
We have work right now out there verifying, what we can verify, right? As we wait from, long wait since March for the survey, we just received it Friday at three o'clock, so we're working to get it done. We're going to verify as we start today to get more.
Is that the gas line?
The gas line is variable, it's blocked in the road. That we know is a six-inch line, it's in the road, we're going to figure out the depth, we put that revised in. Sanitary line we know. Yeah, our water department actually had a map showing that gas line terminating at that same point, the same map that showed no water main, but we had to pull it away.
So they avoided, showing the gas main, didn't show a water main there.
Right, showed the gas main.
Okay, final survey to us showed a full water line going right through the island.
Is there any other engineer, one that wants to come up and make some comments?
Well, I was totally in favor of closing, I lived there, right, right at the corner of Main and Maryland, so that's, I'm totally in favor of that. The only thing is with the new revelations, I think we just have to take another look, and it sounds like, you know, Ralph is going to get some information.
He did excellent work.
Yeah, and I appreciate everyone working today on it, but I think Ralph's hoping to get something from National Grid this week, is that correct?
I can't, they take their time, I hope, I hope that's in over the weekend.
Yeah, please.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I'm still in favor of closing the road, I just think this is a detail we're going to have to work out, and we may have to hope for another week or two, but this is what the landscape is thinking of this. And we may not know for another week or two, but this is, I think, a very important project for the area. And this revelation, I don't think changes the need for voting tonight.
I think it changes it. I think we're not at a hundred percent and I want to get there. Again, I live there, so I understand, I hope this is all right.
I understand too.
I think, I don't want to hasten, waste it, I'd rather just wait one more week.
Let me just ask council, is there, if we were to vote tonight on this matter, and it sounds like everyone in the room is confident that we're going to be able to work out a landscaping plan, but if in two months there was some glitch with the landscaping plan, what would be, would this be something we could reverse?
A month before he answers, there's a real simple response. And that is merely because you vote to permit it to be closed, doesn't mean you have to close it. So let us assume that we're moving in one direction and we believe that the destination is closure. And somewhere along the line, we find something that makes closure difficult, if not impossible. Which is not closing, because I don't think that from what I hear so far, anybody is going to break any concrete, dig any road until all the questions are answered. So the purpose of the hearing is just to permit the closure of the road, not to in fact close it.
If that's the case, I'm okay with it.
Okay, that sounds good.
I didn't know that.
Joe, I just want to hear it.
Two questions, does anyone know where the boiler room for the platform is located? Do we know?
Do you guys make gray structure, like gray structure, like you see outside the track?
Right there.
So the chances are that the street that's after Houston, I don't know if they would, they have to have a main also. Every block has a main. Why don't they just tap off that and leave it alone?
Because the difficulty is they're bringing the elevator as well. So they're closing probably for this five meter.
Talking about the gas main, the gas main is to supply the boilers, so why not just tap off that other line? They could extend it straight across.
So we asked them that question, there must be another gas main they can use and that's fine. But it still leaves us with the situation of, it's not where they tap them. It always comes down to they move that stub for us. Right? Because if they move the stub, they can still tap off that stub. They don't have to find a location, it's still going west, it's coming west a little further south, then we're north a little further south. It has about thirty feet to the run and twenty-five feet. So I don't think it's a big ask, but the key comes down to a bit of all that stub. If they can find another gas attachment west of Houston, that makes it easier for the 3TC to attach, but doesn't solve our gas main planting.
Is it capped before the island or on the south side?
It's capped about, it runs right through, to cut through, and it's capped about, I'd say, a foot north of the curb line in the westbound. You can see if you go there, there's a big yellow mark, there's a little dome mark, it's a dead end.
But if they cap that, it is capped directly.
Why not just cap it further up, that's all, if they use another stream, it makes more sense.
Actually, all they have to do is dig a hole and abandon the one there, they just cap it.
But they must have other mains they could tap into, just eliminate the issue altogether, so.
It wasn't their issue to report them to the council.
Thanks, Joe. It's been kind of frustrating, it's been quite a while we've been talking about this. And have this at the eleventh hour, it's kind of frustrating. But unfortunately, the 3TC took a long time to get the survey, I don't know why they took that long. But when we sent them an email to Pascal, I guess he moved it. So I think we should, oh, Kathy.
I'm sorry. Kathy Nora on Maryland Avenue, when I was out for my walk yesterday, referring to the corner where you used to live, there are the signs for PSEG, they're red markers at that corner. I mean, there's nothing on my property, but there was a year's ago, but that's all washed away. But is this going to cause a problem since it's on the southwest corner of Main and Houston Road? These little signs in the little property, the PSEG?
I'm sorry, I was up there today, but I didn't notice them.
I was just being nosy because I get annoyed with all these people who have these signs saying, "Don't open my property because it's dangerous to humans and animals." So I deliberately walked down to the curb while the jackhammers were going to do the water investigation. And I said, and it said PSEG, the little red flag, and I know the red represents electrical. So talking about gas and National Grid and water, you know, the other stuff, the sewer, I thought, is this adding another problem or is it not a problem at all?
So I'm just guessing, I'll be optimistic. The east-west characteristics of our water main and the electrical should not interfere with the north-south area we're talking about, because we know it's there, we know we have a gas main, we know we have sanitary sewer, and we know we have no water main. So we're talking about, we're talking about the area that they're considering closing. Would be a matter of just extending the curb line on both the north and south side, ripping out the asphalt and putting soil in there and leveling it so it's grassy in future planning. So that's, I mean, there's some alterations for parking that are contemplated, but nonetheless, merge those islands, it's that simple. It's really, it's really changing the way the concrete meets each other and ripping up the asphalt and putting soil in that particular area.
I was just curious, because I saw the signs on the village property, which would be the other side of the sidewalk from where you have it. And I'm thinking, where those, there are no signs on my property. When all of this started back in twenty, probably in twenty-six, I mean, I had red, you name it, every color marked on my sidewalk. But I'm thinking, all of a sudden, I see at this one corner, the little flags.
So when, when it's a construction job, when on every car is excavation, it's beholden on the contractor, of course, per for contractors, to call 811 for what's another markouts. Those markouts are good for ten days. And so every utility, including our water department, will go out there and mark. So that's where those electric flags come from. They may or may not be part of reconfiguration of the project, I don't know, but that's what happens. They will go away, they will go away.
They will go away, thank you.
Keep monitoring, of course.
You're walking on village property, it's getting so much, what else can I do with my...
The rain happens, on the audience or from zooming up on it? I make a motion to close the public hearing. Or if we have a... I'm sure we get all the comments.
My name's Bob Seaman at 226 Nassau Boulevard, a neighbor of Kathy. I was wondering if there's going to be a study to see what happens when that roadway is blocked off. Perhaps we could use temporary luggage to see how much traffic? Because I see when the trains come in, there must be all kinds of cars making U-turns at that road. And if you go to Wellington to make a U-turn, it's going to be much more difficult, because it's much narrower. So there is a lot of traffic at that spot when there are trains coming in. Thank you.
Commissioner, do you want to address that, because I think you were involved with the traffic plan?
Thank you, trustee. When that little road is open, there's a lot of pedestrian conflicts. But veering everybody off to the right and around the curve will eliminate some of those pedestrian conflicts, because there's less pedestrians over on the curve. It is quite a scene on a rush hour, that little Houston Road cutoff. And it's really not able to be used that properly because of that. So actually, I think it will move the cars, keep the cars moving a little faster. And there's a couple ideas I have for like stop signs and stuff on the curve. I think that will all work out, and I think for the pedestrian conflicts, we'll make it safer.
Thank you, Commissioner. I would say we take a vote on the resolution to discontinue a portion of the hearing. I have to close the hearing first, okay? Can you make an application to close the hearing?
Second.
Hold the favor?
Aye aye.
I make a motion and we vote on the resolution to discontinue a portion of the Houston Road. That motion should include the fact that you deem that portion of the road useless. Are there any contingencies that we should include? Look, the record indicates that there's a motion being made, that after duly having a hearing and hearing from all the residents, in favor or against the issue, that the section of Houston Road is deemed useless.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye aye.
A special thanks to Paul and Bruce, and your, and Ralph, on all the exceptional work that you've done.
Our favorite engineer, Peter, and John Ryan.
Yeah, John Veroni. And Giuseppe, and Giuseppe, thanks to everybody. We made monumental advancements.
Thank you. Okay, let's now get that one back. Do we have any other items?
We have some trustee comments.
Are we doing this for the first, or are we doing the trustee comments? There's a presentation, there's a presentation in 555 Stewart Avenue, we're doing that first, for trustee comments. Are they here?
Mr. Levin, you want to? Okay, you're up.
I think there's Thomas Levin, Councilor of Nationality and Liberty of the Florence, 555 Stewart Avenue, who'd like to address the board of trustees and residents of the village and support the project. Thank you.
And since the project has been approved and is moving along quite well, it reached the point where we need some rest of the board, it's a little small. As you know, the project from the first, actually, on several elements, is starting, is being controlled and operated. The project is a slide. So one of the conditions of approval was that the developer had approved a project, that in some of those point units, in three spaces, we afford units, projects, including four units. The details of those units, the number of units, the size of the units, and the degree of income, it's qualified one in a way of rent one, and all spelled out in detail in the resolution that we're starting to work. But the developer, I think it's Ashley Sparks, she's here in person. She came up to make a presentation to you on the project, so President Wilson may...
Hi, I'm Inka Okafor, my name is Ashley Sparks. My name is Ashley Sparks, and I represent a company, the developer for 555 Stewart Avenue or Florence, as the working name is called. Also, I have general thoughts, if you'd like to be printed, any questions for her? I'll try and speak louder. 555 Stewart Avenue is also called Florence, and we have an affordable housing program that will host fifteen units. This is a photo of the entry off of Stewart Avenue. This is building one hundred, and behind is going to be building two hundred. And we'll see a diagram of that, that'll be a little bit clearer. Just a short overview of the program. We'll have three different levels of affordability, forty percent, sixty percent, and eighty percent of AMI. We are partnering with the Long Island Housing Partnership to assist us in marketing the project to Long Island. The initial prospective resident selection will occur via lottery, sixty days prior to occupancy of the community. This program will consider assets as income, except for homeownership. Homeowners are excluded from eligibility for the program. And then occupancy standards are two persons per bedroom. In building one hundred, we will have four two bedrooms on the first floor of varying affordability, and four bedrooms on the second floor of varying affordability. In building two hundred, we will have one two bedroom, one three bedroom on the first floor, a one bedroom and two two bedrooms on the second floor, and a one bedroom and a two bedroom on the third floor, all at varying levels, with the exception of the three bedroom, that will be an eighty percent of AMI or area median income. This is a diagram of the community. Building one hundred is right beside Stewart Avenue, just to get a bearing of the plan. So you'll enter in between the two sides of building one hundred. You'll see the four squares, those are the two bedrooms. And then on the second building, two hundred, that's the three bedroom and the two bedroom on the first floor. On the second floor, we have four more two bedrooms in building one hundred, then two two bedrooms and a one bedroom in building two hundred. And on the third floor, in building two hundred, we have another one bedroom and a two bedroom. So our goal is to market to those least likely to apply, to ensure that we're offering equal opportunity to housing at all. And our target areas are Long Island and New York City. So we have a multitude of publications where Long Island Housing Partnership will market on our behalf, and there are interested few names there. Here's an additional list of marketing opportunities, and these are all throughout Long Island and New York. This is our tenant selection timeline, one hundred and twenty days to our certificate of occupancy. The Long Island Housing Partnership will start their marketing campaign, and that will run through the ninety days prior. Sixty days before our certificate of occupancy, we will open the application portal and close it twenty-five days later. So thirty days in advance, we will begin the lottery process, certify all of our residents, and get them ready to move in when our certificate of occupancy is available. A little bit about the lottery process. So we will use a random number generator to select our tenants, which one that you can find online, to make sure that it is in fact random. And then those fifteen that are selected will go through the full process of being certified, requiring all the documents to be provided, credit application, and all of those things allowable. That will then go through me as the Immortal Housing Administrator, and then to the Village for approval prior to submitting a lease. Income guidelines are adjusted every year by HUD, and those will be administered to us through the Village and Garden City. And that will adjust the AMI or area median income and the allowable rental rates for the program. Tenants will need to meet a minimum income of one and a half times the rent, which is adjusted from our market rate, which requires three times the rent. And then they will also be required to provide all forms of income to confirm that they do not exceed the income threshold. And beside that, I have some examples of income sources. So it could be earned income, asset and dividend income, retirement income, et cetera. And then here we have our occupancy calculations. Just shows for one bedroom, it's two persons, for a two bedroom, it's four persons, and for a three bedroom, it's six persons. In addition to my PowerPoint presentation, I did provide some additional documents. One would be an outline of our affordable housing program, which basically summarizes this in a Word document instead of a PowerPoint. And then our rental criteria, which is modeled after our market rate rental criteria, and then our affordable housing checklist for our lease documents. Thank you for your time. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question. Who oversees the lottery process to make sure that it goes smoothly and it's fair?
So it'll be myself, and then everything will flow through Thomas Levin, I believe.
Because sometimes you have an outside accounting firm, but we'll do that on your BF.
We're open to suggestions. Right now, we just have it slated to go through our corporate office. We can give a different option.
How do you monitor the occupancy of the apartments? Like you said, the two-bedroom is six, the two is four. How do you know there's not extended family coming in, and how is extending these apartments?
Do I need to wait for it to be repeated into the microphone?
Yes, we appreciate it.
If we got to. Is it lycra?
It doesn't until you touched it.
No, I didn't touch it. I'll be letting on the bottom.
Oh, it's on now.
It's on now. Of the occupancy of the apartments, how do you know that it's going to stay to the apartment?
The two-bedroom is six, and the two is four, and so it went off again. How do you know that that's, who monitors those occupancies so you don't have extended families moving into those apartments?
So I'll just repeat the last part of your question. The gentleman is asking how we're going to monitor how many occupants are in the home to make sure that they're not exceeding that limit. So we do that in a multitude of ways. Anyone who's going to reside in the home has to be on the application, even if they're just a resident or a minor, so that we know how many people will reside in the home. We also only grant the amount of access keys for the people that are on that application and on that lease.
Can I ask a real stupid question? You have two people in a single bedroom. She is pregnant and has twins. What do you do?
Well, there are a couple points to that, so. As defined by HUD, someone who's pregnant is considered one person, and so those are not considered additional occupants. And anyone under the age of 24 is also not considered technically an occupant. So at that time that they turn 24 months, they would be counted as occupants, and then they would no longer qualify for the location that they're in. 24 months. Hi, before you go to the lottery to select the tenants, how do you?
Pre-select and because, well, see, I think that's what happens, exactly.
Give another one? I could borrow yours.
All right, let's try that.
Okay, let's try this again. Before you go to the lottery to select the tenants, how do you pre-select them and scan them to put them in the pool? Who is scanning these tenants to put them in the pool before you actually go into the lottery? And what criteria has to be met, aside from what you've listed here? What about sex offenders, you know, past criminals, things like this? I mean, what other demographic and information do we know about these people that are pooled into this pool before they are selected? So with the way HUD has the program's structure, you don't recertify? That would eliminate the opportunity of housing. If they don't meet our criteria when we screen them, if they're selected and then screened, then they would not be accepted to the program. So you can't see the citizens of, I mean, do they need to be citizens of America, or can they be transient? They need to provide either a social security number or an ITIN number. Okay, because we're having issues. I mean, my parents have house out in the Hamptons, and there's a lot of infiltration of, obviously, illegal aliens that are coming, illegal immigrants, non-immigrants coming into the area and being housed, and all these special housing that's popping up. And it's just a concern.
I'm sure there's a good answer to the question. Why does the marketing group increase in New York City? Only have enough people on Long Island that should use the housing we made available as affordable, rather than reaching into the city where there are millions of affordable units, hundreds of thousands of affordable units available.
So I'll repeat the question to the microphone. The gentleman was asking why we are marketing in New York City and not just on Long Island. HUD is a federal program, and so we need to market to those in the general vicinity. So we will do a lot of marketing in Long Island, but we will also need to market to New York City as it's in some of those proximity.
Currently, what is the average income requirement that you're using as the percentage if it was to be done today?
The gentleman is asking what the average income would be based on the percentages available. This year, the area median income for Garden City is $142,000, and so it would be a percentage of that based on household size. So there is a matrix table of different qualifying income levels based on the number of occupants in the household, but it would be at the minimum 40%, and then extrapolated to deduct for multiple people. So essentially, 40% of 142,000, round about.
Other question.
If you just adjust the fact that there be different income levels, the units are forcing them on, and they're not all rent money income levels, certain units are 40% AMI or versus 60% or 20%.
Yes, there's 40%, 60%, and 80% income throughout the community, or area median income.
What's the lowest monthly rent in the complex and the highest monthly rent?
We are not ready to price the homes yet. We're still under construction. We just got windows on one of our buildings. As it gets closer, we'll have some more information. Another question.
When's the expected date of CMO?
We are hoping for early 2023.
I don't think so. I see where you are in construction. There's no way that's happening.
They're pretty quick, but I'm concerned about the length.
I guarantee it won't happen. But anyway, my next question is, who owns this property? How is this project funded? And who is the operating manager or managing company of this property and however they own this project?
Actually, I can speak to those. I'm a house councilor.
How is this project funded? Is it private investment?
The project is 100% private investment. Southern Land Company is the developer, the property manager, and essentially the general partner of the property owner. All investment in the project is private.
And how much funding came from the state and the government?
None.
None at all? Completely private?
We have.
Completely 100% private? No funding or any kind of incentives from the state or from the government?
That's correct.
Goes to Southland?
Goes to Southland and plan to sell the building in a certain period of time after occupancy, or is it an investment they're keeping for long?
As of right now, we plan to keep it long-term, but obviously, things can change. But yes, as of now, the plan is to keep it as long.
Historically, how long has Southern Land kept the properties that they've built?
You know, that's a good question. It really varies. In a lot of circumstances, we have built and sold. We have single-family communities across the country that have existed, one in Tennessee for going on 22 years. So it really varies based on location, geography, and any factors that are relevant to the project and the current affairs, really.
And do you have any precedent projects before this to compare?
We do. Do you mean in the Garden City area?
No, no, just precedent, just generally throughout your collection and portfolio.
Sure, we do construction and development nationwide.
For this particular type of property?
Yes, we do multifamily development across the country. I would urge you to check out our website. We have plenty of projects.
Can you give that information to us?
Sure, I believe it's southernland.com. I can verify that quickly, but I believe that's the address.
Your forecast, how much do we need to accommodate the school system from the private?
I can't answer that. I don't know off the top of my head. Are there any other questions on the affordable housing program? Great, thanks a lot.
There's one more.
One more question.
Are these prospective residents going to be subject to village taxes, school taxes, et cetera? Who's going to pay for education?
I can, for what I'm, I can address some of that. The, as far as the village tax go, the project does have an IDA funded within tax account.
It's not something that's exempted.
But we do have an agreement with the developer that would, as far as village taxes go, they will continue to make up the difference between the use tax and the ID exemption and the tax that would provide if they didn't know. So the village will not have any sort of tax revenue from those exemptions at all. The school district is a different issue. We do have control and no arrangements were made between developer and school district to keep the school district taxes at the same level. So there will be lower school taxes for period of years, and then they can, that exemption will take out over a period of years, and there will be 100% of taxes, I believe, in about 20 years.
Does it?
I have a question.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I would just ask you this. Once the tenants are selected through the lottery, do they have to qualify each year to see if they're still eligible for that HUD affordable housing?
They do.
And then is it the someone's, whether it's only one's responsibility to check for qualifications or someone else?
So we have a multi-tiered approval process. It will go through the onsite team. The onsite team will pass to me. I will do a second review, and then it will go to the village for approval before we sign a lease, whether that's initially or renewal.
And will you, so that at any point of renewal, that would be the part?
Yes.
And how long are the leases for?
12 months.
So that potentially, you'll have to qualify.
So the length of the lease is three years or 12 months? Because you said 12 months, and he said three years. What's it, what is the length of the lease?
The program can allow up to 24 months. Our typical max is 12. So we would recertify them.
So where is 36?
I believe he said 24, it's just hard to hear.
Yeah, he said 20, 21.
Okay. And so the tenants get reviewed through your company, but also get approved by the village? I'm trying to understand the process of designation and reservation.
Yes, so typically with affordable housing programs, they go through the management company for the community for the first level of approval, and then they go through the housing authority. In this instance, that would be the village of Garden City.
And that's for each tenant transfer or change of occupancy?
Yes.
So what happens if they don't fall down the road? A little bit annual recourse to Southern Land, which the village has to clarify, has been stated in the operational, has been moved out, and the statute of legal. That's why students, building, blocking, or whatever else, those might physically get into that.
So if a family doesn't fall down anymore, and they refuse to leave after their lease is up, what's the remedy and what happens then? So what, so do they get to stay there for a certain period of time? Is there any, you know, become a battle between this property and the person and the town? So what happens?
So if an affordable tenant were to overstay, and they did not re-qualify for the program, we would move through the standard eviction process. It would be the exact same scenario as any tenant who is asked to leave the premises at the end of their lease and chooses not to do so. We would follow that same process.
Okay, so what's happening to all the properties that have affordable housing? How is that, in that whole process?
In our portfolio currently, we do not have any apartment buildings with affordable housing. We have one opening later this year in Philadelphia that will have affordable units. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions about the affordable housing? Thank you.
Let's go back, try to get back to the front. Let's go to the general members. Are there any specific comments on the general members?
Actually, we have trustee speaking, we'd like to read it. I'm reading this on behalf of trustee Beaton, trustee Carter Plining, trustee Chester, trustee Kelly, and trustee Marciano. We're grateful to all the hard work of the mayor's committee of St. Paul's. We're glad to see that trustees and residents are now able to see the proposed plan to St. Paul's main building and that it's displayed outside of this room. We understand that this information has been circulated that some of us are against the renovation of St. Paul's or against spending money on a cost estimate or comparative analysis. This is simply false. We do not reach any conclusions and are only waiting to review all the documentation and research that has led to the recently completed plans. As you can imagine, we are hearing many questions from residents who have been awaiting the results of the St. Paul's committee's hard work. At this point, the VOTU will need time to review the proposed plans, the community input to date, and to decide the next steps as we move towards the promised community vote. We all take our fiduciary duty to the village very seriously, and many are questioning why you have not been more involved in this process and more informed. It was only a few weeks ago that after we produced a letter that actually referred to our Jepsons to the process to date, that the mayor decided to appoint three trustees to actually serve as liaisons to the mayor's committee. Before that, our interaction with the committee has been limited to this day at best. We feel that every trustee needs to be fully informed now and moving forward. This issue is simply too big for it to be any other way. And to the residents who have been asking, we also believe all residents should be fully informed on this important process. We recognize that because this has been such a divisive issue, full transparency is of the utmost importance to the board of trustees and to the residents of Garden City. After we have had sufficient time to review all the documentation, we will speak about the next steps. That is why, amongst other reasons, we are not going to support the vote for the St. Paul's expenditures.
Can I turn it on?
Yeah.
Okay. Assuming that statement was going to be made, let me refer to the following. As you may know, last month, the mayor appointed Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Marciano, and myself as liaison to the St. Paul's committee. In that capacity, I have attended a number of meetings, received many emails and comments from residents and my fellow trustees. All of the information provided is important in that the village are able to make an educated and informed decision when they vote. Since the inception, the committee has done extraordinary work because of their effort, which has recently come together, a substantial body of work, building plans, photographs, intended uses, programs, and information that has been developed by the committee, some of which you may have seen in the village hall as you came up here today and is only now available. This information was not available nor provided to the entities that responded to the RFP quite candidly because it didn't exist. There are now drawings, photographs, and plans that should be provided to the entities that responded to the RFP to ensure the village obtains the best result. From the inception, the goal of the St. Paul's committee was to engage in a process that resulted in providing the residents with information to which base a knowing decision. The purpose of the RFP was to provide the residents with a projected cost for the options when it came down to a vote. Since the initial premise and documentation provided to those responding to the RFP has changed, it is imperative that we, both the committee and the trustees, update the process and offer to each entity the opportunity for clarification to the response that they submitted to the RFP. For those unfamiliar with the term RFP, it means request for proposals. This is different than a bid submitted to the village for a contract. Under an RFP, the village is able, if it so chooses to accept, it can reject any submission or, in a case, other information becomes available, it can ask for information from the entities and reach out for what is called clarification. The process that seeks clarification from each entity is in order that each response is uniform in what is being sought and response is accurately compared. This process enables the village to properly and validly compare the alternative costs from each responding entity. In looking at the responses that have been received, instead of receiving a single cost, each entity will be required to submit a best price matrix in each of the following categories for either demolition or renovation. This matrix provides the village with the ability to compare, and if in the village's best interest, utilize different contractors for different components. The categories that separate the responses, which are and should be characterized separately, is construction costs, environmental assessment costs, and abatement costs. To make certain that the members of the board are able to give their input, we, the members of the committee, ask that they provide to the building department as soon as possible, preferably by Monday, the ability to have Mr. Giovinelli submit to and integrate their information and request for clarification that is to be sent out by Tuesday. Accordingly, I will be asking that the request for any funding of the, that is presently sought in the agenda for the substantiation of contractor be withdrawn from the agenda.
I have a question. I'm in favor of doing what you said. But I do, I wanted, they're asking for all of us to provide information for the RFP that we feel we need in order to move ahead with on the issue.
Specifically, each adjuster and anyone here who thinks they need specific information and has a question they want to have answered, as soon as you can, preferably by Monday, give it to Mr. Giovinelli so that that information can be integrated into the request for further clarification of responses that is to be sent out to seek the contractor estimates for the costs.
And then before it goes out, can the board of trustees review the draft before it goes out through the issuance?
That would be a good idea.
All right, well, that sounds good.
Joseph, you want to add anything to this? There was a possibility that.
The only thing I want to add to that, Mayor, is that we should put a deadline on that request for all the information submitted to be by Monday. I can repair that by Tuesday, have that out, and I would recommend that all seven or eight people that originally took the RFP hopefully would take it again and repost it, give moderation, possibly two weeks, give them two weeks to get the information back to us if they have a request to send the RFP back to us.
So the RFP with clarification and additional information?
That's correct.
Additional information being drawings and the development of the committee?
That is correct.
Because the previous RFP did not have the information, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so now we've made progress. Committee's made tremendous progress.
Friends.
That can be used.
And I compliment everyone.
Probably estimate, right?
Yes.
Beginning of what we call a schematic design estimate.
That is correct.
And then we'll have numbers that can go to the bank.
Yes.
With, just to clarify again, not to overuse that word, but all of the documentation and all of the work that was done by the committee will then be provided to those entities. For instance, the programs, the uses, the plans, the photographs, anything that would be useful to aid a person developing a estimate will be provided. And the RFP that is going to be set down will have an addendum A, which will then list all of the documentation that is available for those entities to review. And I've also asked village clerk Walton to see if there's any other documentation from a historical standpoint, from other studies that were done that we can include in order to make this as comprehensive as possible for whomever is reviewing. I'd like to thank everyone for clarifying half of what I was going to say tonight. There are a few points I would like to address. I'm again, there's something called engagement of professional services for forensic investigation of financial activity. Which person placed that on the agenda?
I did.
You understand what forensic accounting is?
Yes, sir.
What, forensic accounting, is it done to investigate a fraud situation or a whistleblower situation? Is it something we don't know?
Well, here's the issue, so you, I'll make it very clear. Prior Board spent $2.1 million, a taxpayer dollars, to not stabilize the roof. If you just spent $40,000, we'll get 75% reimbursement from FEMA.
Did somebody, did somebody approve the invoice that came in?
That, that, that's true. So what happened was this $2.1 million that was spent by prior Board. The committee, the architecture and engineering committee, went to their building and the result is they asked questions. Where was the money spent? We didn't see $700,000 worth of construction cost spent on the building. Fact that really was alarming that I walk into the building and the roof is wide open, it's raining on my head. So again, before that, this, we intended, originally, we wanted to make sure that the money was spent wisely. So we asked a review to conduct a audit of all the funds that were spent by the prior Board on stabilization and the design process that was done, not the RFP, right, for the $2.1 million spent by prior Board. That's my answer.
Someone, someone in this village administration had to approve an invoice for work not performed.
Apparently, the oversight was very minimal by the village, okay? That's what I had learned. So as a matter of fact, we're investigating that as well.
So why is, why is there an accounting issue at this point? You know, the bill was paid, somebody approved it. Somebody approved work that wasn't done.
We're trying to verify that the money that was paid, we got from biggest banks in the block, right? Trying to make sure that it correlates with the work that was done on the job. That's the issue.
Okay, they did not perform the work as detailed in the contract that was approved by the village.
We're trying to make sure that the money that was spent correlates with the work that was done.
My next thing, my next point is partially covered, but I had a problem last week when I read the RFPs. First of all, I think we're going to overcome the publicity issue. The RFPs were never public. I had to do an RF, I had to do a oral request to get the RFPs. Then I started reading the responses, and I started reading about, so, using a facade. That is not mentioned in the RFP at all, but a couple of the people who answered the RFP wrote about that. How did they come aware of it?
Well, the attempt, I believe, was that originally the RFP was put out by the village. Was, was part of the original order, which was to determine if St. Paul's main building could be repurposed or it could be demolished. That was the charge. Facade is, was an extraneous idea.
How, how did the people who gave the bid come up with the idea that you could give your price on the facade?
There's only one person, I believe, that identified the cost of the facade.
They don't even participate in the facade, is my point. Somebody say, oh, by the way, give us, he separated price from.
Yeah, the building department asked them to add the cost for that.
They asked everybody in writing or on phone, telephone, constituent?
They asked the lowest qualifying bidder to include that.
How would they, how'd they communicate this? Can I answer my question? Did they send a letter out? It's not in the RFP. Did they send the letter out to the meeting?
It's not, that was a phone call.
A phone call?
Yes, he's, no, it's not a phone call, it's Lowe's bidder.
Fine, we're back to the same thing. Transparency, that should not happen. Clear respect, that can't go on. Likewise. Again, one more question, what has provided to the bid of that one answer? In the, in the, in a previous meeting, you distinguished between historical demolition and standard demolition. Was this mentioned in all the RFP, what kind of demolition you wanted a quota? Because the mayor made a point several months ago that there's a substantial difference between historical demolition and standard demolition. Historical demolition is not required. I would like to clarify, what kind of demolition are we asking for a quota? Can I make a suggestion? Why don't you defer your inquiry until we have the reissuance of the RFP? Okay, I will, I will go along with that. There's a very old rule that if you look backwards, you will trip and fall as you take your next step. And next thing, I would like to suspend, I'd like to suspend all activities of the publicity committee till we stop wasting money in that until we get something to resolve. What publicity committee are you referring to? The one that puts out things like, they're considering the senior center being in the new complex, would that mean they're talking about closing the senior center? Just, just out of curiosity, how about if we take everything one step at a time so that those individuals that have all the information, and since you are now saying that there should be transparency? That you now have three, well, actually, you only have two trustees, the deputy mayor, who are now on the committee and will be engaged in an effort to get you as well as everybody else the same amount of information. This is a document put out by publicity committee that mentions the senior center. What is the date of that? September 9. Okay. Chairman, publicity committee, I didn't create this. Maybe they did. Somebody did. I think, I think they should put it, I would put it, so, anything that's not completely correct, again, not, again, we go back to previous conversation, early on, trustee Plannigan asked to edit what the committee put out. And that request was turned down. So hope. Let's assume for argument's sake that you are at individual making statements. Nobody edits what you say. And I. Excuse me, this committee has been empowered by the mayor to put out propaganda. And you. Let's assume that the committee has its own voice and its own operation. Well, we, we're funding this committee, of course. I don't think I see any one of the people here that the village is issuing a paycheck to. So when you say that the village is funding the committee, please. The, 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 the. Wait a second. When you say funding the committee. They're funding the publicity, of course. Okay, so now, when was the last time that a check was written to fund any of the committee matters? Did you not pay the Garden City news for the ads? Are you not paying the Garden City PR? You're telling me that we want transparency, but you don't want. I'd like to say not paying for publicity, of course. It's very simple. Dissemination of information is transparency. You may not like the words, and therefore you can come up here and as much as you want, question what was done. Next, next point. Sure. Why are you spending $44,000 on an R, without an RFP to clean St. Paul's? Please explain that. Absolutely, absolutely. If a building is not safe under 241 sub six of the Lakeview law and somebody gets injured, this village can get sued. So can I make the suggestion that let us clean the building that should already have been cleaned? Because if anybody goes in that building, if the police, the fire, or anybody else trips on the garbage or anything else, we, the building, are liable for it. This is a matter of safety. I don't, I don't quite understand. You're saying that if you dusting cleaning windows, can you? You're the one who said we should put Swifters out. Well, anytime you want to come to that building with a Swifter to clean it, we really want to see that, because I will get it video and put it in the RFP news. And ask my second question, one out of RFP, who chose this company?
Can I question?
What's their background?
I'll answer that question. We have, we have a cleaning contractor who was competitively bid and awarded the contract by the board. Few months ago, I don't remember that day, but they, in that, or, in that bid we put out, we also allow for, ask them to do additional work. And that was, you know, that came out of the construct of the COVID pandemic, you know, spray the buildings, clean the trucks. So we, we put a lot of things in there that we could do, but we only paid them to do the cleaning of certain places right now. So we're getting competitively bid prices. We asked them to go in there and look at the work to see if they're capable of doing it. They said they were the key member of the press corps. So this is the competitively bid group that we're using. It wasn't just picked out.
So they have been in the building to examine the job and you're in a specific areas you want cleaned.
Yes, I was there with Mr. Jamello, with the owner of the company and one of his main contractors to look at what was needed.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Will Elise from Twenty Protons. Just a couple of comments. I do take offense to the comment that we're being paid for this work. I'm responsible for the drawings outside and for better or for worse, I don't know if it was a good move on my part, but I did it for free. So that's one thing. The other thing. The other thing I wanted to comment on is that we were entrusted to do this fairly and non, nonpartisan. So for example, as far as I know, from day one, when I was asked to join this committee, we were told demolition versus adaptive reuse. You see there is adaptive reuse, demolition is another subject that has to be addressed, and no one's saying it should be. From what I know as an architect, for what it's worth, the building is on the national register, I believe that constitutes a need for historical demolition. And for that reason, it should be priced as an alternate historical demolition and regular recognizable demolition. The demolition price should also include whatever you do with that property. So if you're going to turn it into a field, that's fine, but that should be part of the cost, because that's going to be another expenditure that's going to materialize. Finally, with regard to the RFP, I 100% agree it has to be what we call in my industry, we call it an addendum. And that should be issued. And that should be issued as soon as possible, the way you're dictating and giving them a second week to. My question is, if it's not in the RFP now, it should be written clearly that all, uh, bidders need to visit the building. They need to see it and, you know, if they need a tour or whatever and they see, you know, whatever is exquisite and whatever is a record, they need to do that.
Well, we can't see it unless we clean it.
I was going to state that, Mayor.
Well, I, with respect, I don't think it should be priced without them doing it. So whether you clean it or not, I've been in the building twice. It hadn't been cleaned. And I personally think it could be, you know, if it's a specific tour, they can visit it, you know, and it's coming state. I wouldn't let that hold it. So that's my recommendation.
Well, by the way, they are great drawings.
Well, thank you.
So Will, um, trustee, I'm just, so, Larry Bruce, I'm going to read your, your presentation the other day. It was terrific and all the work you put into it was just phenomenal. So it's nice that the residents can take a look at, and encourage them to take a look at all this good work.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Mr. Mayor, good evening, trustees. I want a clarification, if I may, particularly for you, sir, trustee Turian. Are you saying that if I'm with FDEM, are you saying that if my group wants to have input as to what the RFP should say, if they're going to be amended, that we have until Monday?
Yeah.
Sir, at the last meeting, you were giving the committee an unlimited period of time, no deadlines. You want us and all the residents Friday, Saturday, Sunday to get it in Monday. Don't you think we should have a little more time? How about to the end of next week, sir?
Let's go start off here. Please be accurate of what you said. What I said is the date for the vote should be set in the future. I didn't say that they should have an unlimited time. Now, the question that I have.
I don't agree with you, but go ahead.
That's fine, sir. Because a lot of people don't agree.
And me too.
Okay. The question really is, what information is it that you think should be added to the RFP? Do you have that, do you have a knowledge now of what you intend to say?
My group has discussed this with an architect, a good architect, a reputable architect in Manhattan. We would want to talk to him about what we now could potentially ask. The subject of historical demolition, for example. This is quote unquote, an historic building, but it is not a national landmark. If things are going to be saved and the process of demolition has to understand and include that, I understand that. But then those things to me have to be itemized by somebody and include that in the RFP so that a responsible company can evaluate that in terms of what they're going to do and how they're going to cost. Is that reasonable, sir?
I'm not really sure what you're trying to say.
Maybe you don't understand because you don't know what historical demolition is, do you?
Because I, my understanding with regard to demolition, whether it's historic or not, is salvaging of certain items that are within a structure. And therefore, once those items are salvaged, however they turn out to be, the balance of the structure is then subjected to whatever action or activity will occur. For instance, let us assume that you decide, or somebody decides to submit a proposal, because I have not seen it yet, that they want to take off one, two, three wings in the building. Well, if you want to do that, then what you would wind up doing is removing those items that would otherwise be demolished. You would then have to have an engineering plan as to how to retain that portion of the structure after it is being removed. Yes, that would take a while.
Well, weeks. Actually, you know what? I'm glad you're sitting. I think I agree with you on much of what you just said in terms of itemizing this information. And depending on whether you're going to knock the whole thing down or you're going to keep some of it, that will change some of the parameters, just like when you're demolishing something, depending on the use going forward, you either remove the foundation or maybe you don't. So there's a lot of information.
I'm not going to keep any of that building up if I'm taking the foundation from underneath.
I said whether you remove the foundation or not, sir. Removing the building if it's then demolished, that's what it means.
But let's get down to your ultimate question, that you want to have additional time within which to submit something.
To the end of next week.
So my first question is, what have you been doing? And is it.
I just don't, don't, if you listen to what I've just said, I think you understand that we have been trying to research this and we have been trying to understand.
How long have you been trying to research it? You just said you've been trying to research it.
Yeah, this is not a course examination, sir. We've been doing this for months and we were waiting for the committee to issue something on demolition before we came forward with what we think because we don't want to conflict unnecessarily. We don't want to argue over things that don't need to be argued at. And you as an attorney should know this above anybody, that lawyers try to narrow issues. We don't want to create issues that are not necessary. Okay?
I believe you responded to my last letter in which I wrote to the paper in which it was my position that anybody who had input should immediately put their position forward.
I don't think I did. I don't think I responded that.
I didn't say that you responded, but I know that it was in the paper that any group that had any position on what to do with St. Paul should bring it forward. So my whole question here is, what is it that, why do you need seven days versus until Monday, Tuesday?
Well, maybe I'm going away for the weekend. Maybe I have other obligations.
Well, I do too.
You're giving us one business day, one business day. And we have, as I mentioned, an architect that we'd like to consult. Whether or not he's available and linked to discuss it with us between now and Monday, I cannot say because I'm not a money man, sir.
What's the problem to give you an extra five days? Why do you question that, Tom? Why not say okay?
It's been 10 months, give him a month.
Do it for 30 years.
Part of the reason for the speed or the desire for speed is because how long is, because every, once, everything that gets pushed back pushes back everything to later on. Initially, there was the request to have the vote in November. That, I believe, cannot happen. But the question is, we'd like to have it on a date, but is everything then going to be pushed back?
So one week is going to make such a huge difference. Is that your position, sir?
It may. Never know. I don't think this is put out.
Do I have the answers to whether we can have a week?
I think we're going to get to a vote on all of this. I think there's disagreement probably up here.
My name is George Salem. I'm a colleague of Steve Wright. And our organization is called FDEM, which stands for demolish. 10 days ago, I sent the email address to the co-chairs of the St. Paul's committee, Ryan Difflin and Bob Shelley. The purpose of my request was we want a time slot at the October 12th for November town halls in order for our committee in favor of demolition to make its case to the people. Or could we have our own town hall? To this day, I have received no response to my email. So today, I am requesting an answer. Our case for the time slot is based on the fact that previous town halls have not addressed demolition one iota. Nor, nor does the users committee seem interested in demolition, which is why I resigned from the St. Paul's committee, users committee several months ago. In fact, 100% of the committee's presentations seem to favor reasons for preservation of the building. And we can see the, the beautiful artwork that's outside in the hallways. This procedure is not democracy. The committee is simply not impartial. They have been allocated thousands of dollars for spending to make their case. Our committee has been granted zero. Residents deserve to hear both sides of the debate in order to know how to vote. You have, you have a campaign, you vote A or B, but only A is presenting their case. As then, as things stand now, our pro-demolition group has no campaign money and no public forum, while two alternative groups are much better endowed. This includes the $23,000 granted to the St. Paul's committee to major, major media campaign. This is the equivalent of a David versus the Lions situation. And in fact, we have a water pistol and they have a fire hose. Mr. Mayor, will you correct this situation and grant us some time to address the public?
Mr. Salem, may I respond briefly? The display that is out there is intended to be there for the residents to view for the balance of at least this month. If you have any presentation, any drawings, or anything that you wish likewise to put out there, please do so.
All I'm asking for is equal time.
Now, what I'm saying is, whatever you want to put out there for people to look at, do it.
I'm asking for a general forum so the people can hear our side of the argument. This is a one-sided campaign right now. The people are not hearing the demolition arguments at all.
George, George, the demolition analysis will begin. The big, big heavy lifting of this project was to understand if it totally can be programmed for adaptive reuse. Next phase is, as I said when I opened up the meeting, the same, the next phase, we analyze the demolition. Once the, once the engineering and architecture committee gets to that point, we'll invite your committee right to speak to them. But they're not at that point right now, am I correct? Is anybody, well, are we, are we ready to go to demolition now? Are we still working on the adaptive reuse? Okay, so that's the answer. So shortly you'll be called in to discuss with the architectural engineering committee what the demolition program will be.
Maybe we speak at the public forum.
Why not? I mean, our committee, our committee, just to, just to be very clear, is supposed to analyze demolition and adaptive reuse. The committee hasn't got to that point yet. It will.
And all they've done so far is zero.
George, George, that's not true. And you see a tremendous presentation out there. Adaptive reuse takes a lot of time to analyze. We got to go through the programming phases of the project. It took us much longer than we thought to get everybody involved. There was tremendous outreach by the communication group. So again, it takes time to do the project prior. I can't describe that a little bit, I'm sorry.
It's very undemocratic, that's all I can say.
Yeah, this is socialist country.
Hi, good evening. Steve Iris, I live on Fourth Street. Grew up on Chestnut Street. Wife grew up on Elm Street. Daughter lives on Cold and Dry. I've been in this village for, since 1958. I attended both St. Paul's and Bahai School and I've spoken to this board before. I want to thank you tonight for your patience and your service to this community. I would say from what I've heard, on the list of thankless jobs in America, being on a village board, after what I've seen, probably makes two or three steps above being on a condo board. So, uh, I just feel, and I've spoken before on my belief in St. Paul's and the reason to save it, I caution everyone in the village, and I'm not just speaking to the angry gentleman who spoke tonight, but we're getting two hardened sides to this. And that's not the way to operate as a, as a community that we think is special and we think the people in us, in it are special. And we pay extra for our right to be in this village because we feel that way. So I just implore everybody to keep an open mind, turn the volume down, and let everybody speak and, and deal with facts, not passion and anger. And in that, in the fact side, I, I can't, I can't imagine, I don't know that we've gotten a specific price to demolish. But for everyone who wants to demolish, I'd say find out how many tens or fifties of millions it's going to cost to haul that mass away to New Jersey or wherever the hell they'll let us put it. And then just think about spending that much money to improve that much of the building and stabilize it that we can save and have for a public use. And then 20 years from now, when I'm not here to talk to whoever's here in your place, you can decide what the next step you want to take is. But when you look at the cost of demolition, which I'm assuming is part of the request for proposals, I, I just don't see how anyone would then think, instead of spending 50 million to knock it down and haul it away, let's spend 50 million to fix as much of it as 50 million will do and stabilize it. And, uh, you know, the previous village boards have operated on the concept of benign neglect. Let's just leave it alone and hope it'll rot before we have to decide what to do with it. And Cornelia Stewart and the men who built St. Paul's and the building itself have outsmarted the previous board by still being standing in a recoverable state. And we have to think about our village makes us special and different from Hempstead or Blenko or Menhasset or anywhere else. And it's our cathedral, it's our historic buildings, it's our sense of history and culture that we try to preserve. So thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Andy Garden City. Uh, you people have been niggling and dining this project for decades. To do it right, it's going to be a money pit. You have to think big, think creative. Advertise on the internet for interested parties to donate $1 million to St. Paul's Motion Picture Studio creation. Return donor is immortalized with a movie about them. With all village resources available for the making of this movie. Imagine if you go national and international and get 1,000 donors. That's $1 billion, okay? People will spend 1 million, 100 million dollars just for a single painting. Why not have some fun? Encourage village college students to get involved, okay? Stop the cancellation of American history. Add vitality to the village. Add enormous wealth to each village resident. Provide streaming services with content like HBO and Netflix. A movie demonstrates how to exist in a peace kind of economy. And that's what can make movies about peace, okay? Dumbest movie ever made, Avatar, took in over $1 billion. All village schools develop stories for movies. Village resident assets, cars, boats, homes, available for use in making movies. Village residents available to act in movies. Once a studio is created, movies can be made for a virtual cost of zero because the village participates. Uh, let's say you needed a movie about a board. Let's say you needed a movie about a board. Well, just, you have a board right here, just participating in the movie. Have a script, okay? No deadline to finish making a movie. Thousands of movies can be in the process at once, okay? Oh, 99% current movies today are garbage and/or propaganda. There is a need for real movies, okay? And if you don't do it, then you get to tell them thank you for whatever happens. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Tom Libber, 57th and First Street. What is the criterion that you use to select the entities for this cost estimator? However we call it. And how do we, how do we determine the entities, the cost estimated when we send out these proposals?
I believe it was put out on the news.
I have to speak up, I'm a little deaf.
I'm Mr. Mr. Richard. We use a legal notice in New York State Contract Reporter. It's available to the whole world, but we hope that people in the tri-state area specifically are looking at it. It's open to any contractor who's looking for work. So that's how it was found. So it's a wide order, it's meaning we didn't call free people or stuff.
Well, I mean, you're using a book, all right, you know, and you, and how do you, all right? Who do you send it to?
So when you enter, I didn't do the actual entry. When you go into Contract Reporter, you describe the project, you put, you put the description of the RFP, how long it's open for, there's categories within things, is it building construction? Is it, you know, a specific category that I don't remember them all? And so contractors who are, for lack of a better word, fishing for work, look out there to see if the work is being solicited for, if it's something they can do, and they, they put in a big proposal in this case and submit it. And then we look over those proposals to see if they qualify with what we asked for.
Well, it seems to me we need a better process. I mean, when I looked at the RFPs that were submitted, I think it was four. I think you sent out seven, is that correct? And you got four back.
Four on call responses.
Four out of four. And two out of the four really didn't even comply with the RFPs, right? And you're left with two. Now this, you know, we did the Avalon Bay project, we hired Karen Backers and Cosmo knows, because he was on the committee. We have to do a better job of finding cost estimators that have depths in quality. And you need to send out more than seven and get back four. If you're only going to send the same seven again, we're going to get the same response again, which is very inadequate, I keep you, like, this is a major project.
For Avalon Bay, in doing that project, in doing that analysis, you're allowed to go out to solicit proposals on the private sector. But the village tells us it goes through the New York State Contract Reporter, because that's the process they use.
But you gotta do a better job, guys.
I have to call them up. What I'm saying is, Tom, they would have to believe us in doing that, to go out to the private sector and identify which cost estimator is actually experienced.
Mayor, just wanted to clarify, we can do both, it's not either or. We put out to the Contract Reporter so anyone who's interested can apply. And we also, when we do know people who have an expertise, we will take the time to also email them so we know that they got, because they might not look at the contract first. We do both. It's, we try to get as big an audience for our proposals as possible.
So we're not the only village in town, I mean, you look, I'd start to search myself once I got the, you know, the RFPs, you know, there are many, many well-known architectural engineering firms. Cosmo knows, in the city of New York, we've got a lot of Cosmo.
We're looking, I'm not looking for an architect or an engineer for this, Tom. We're looking for a cost-estimated firm. Estimators who have experience in historic preservation and demolition.
Whatever was done in the past was not satisfactory. If you're really going to do, this is a, you know, as Ezra has described, this gem of a building and you want to preserve it, and you get the responses that we got, it was terrible, it was inadequate. You gotta do whatever it takes. You need to go out and do a better job so we have more than what we had before, both in the number of responses and qualifying, it was a poor choice. It was very, like, the range of bids was just, you know, from $39,000 to $196,000. How do you say $39,000 a bid? I mean, you know, something's wrong with the process right now. So the next time around, we'd really need more quality cost estimators to look at than what we had before because that is going to be an invaluable and important number. And not to have the best to do it is not serving this village. You've got a lot of talent up there, so you go, go find those people, thank you.
Tom, when you use the royal weed, yo, Tom, over here.
Oh, over there, oh. I told you I can't, I know I can't see.
You use the term "the royal weed," does that mean that you're volunteering that weed?
I have no royalty, I am, I am a first-generation Italian.
Ah, yeah.
My father was the addresser, my mother was the seamstress, so I ain't no boy.
Hi, my name is, my name is, I think my name is, I'll speak loud. My name is John Hope, and I lived in the window, I've been in town for 50-something years, and my contacts go back over 70 years when my choir was brought to sing in the cathedral. Back in those days, I was a soprano, a singer, not the gangster. Anyway, I'm an industrial engineer. And compliments to the group, I think your display outside with those drawings are absolutely terrific. I only, a lot of people over town loved it and, and understood it. But I do have one kind of loaded question for the trustees. Let's assume, let's go off the deep end and assume everything works just fine. And here we are at the very end of Hendrix, we're talking about a residential pole, as we want to do. To what extent will the board be governed by the results of that pole? Is this kind of a finding referendum, or exactly what is the pole?
My vision of the pole is that if the residents want something and they vote, we should respect their vote. That's what I like to see.
Okay, we can put it on record for that.
I just said it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Evan Wong, I have a company called Demolition Depot and replace the artifacts, two companies. Many years ago, I was called in, many years ago, I was called in by a demolition company who I know to give them a salvage figure on part of their bid. And I looked at the building, and when I walked out, I was shocked to see that someone would consider taking this building down. My background in the preservation, I've been in the business for 49 years. And I've seen hundreds and hundreds of buildings in my career. And I've seen very, a lot of tragedies over the years when things shouldn't have been taken down and they have been. For example, there was one called Inisfata, I don't know if anyone's familiar with it. That was probably one of the biggest tragedies in the local area, which should never have come down at all. Fortunately, I wound up with most of the contents, and I have it stored in the warehouse and re-erected at some point, and some of them are in museum property. And some of the pieces got repurposed, like the chapel went to Fordham University. One of my clients funded the, the removal of it and the re-erection of it. And so that part was preserved, and we preserved some other parts of it. Unfortunately, I think the whole thing was mishandled, because the building should still be standing because it was one of the most, one of the largest mansions ever built in America. And it was built by Nicholas Brady, who was one of the founders of Con Edison, who had spent $5 million in 1914 to build the place. And running his own object, the incredible amount of artwork that was in the building was unbelievable. But the loss of it is worse than actually, you know, not having it is worse. Because I've seen this with Greystone, I don't know if anyone's familiar with Greystone out in Cornersville, New Jersey. That was another tragedy that the governor did. He tore that building down when there were so many other uses available to it. And now they have an empty land, it costs them money to maintain. So kind of an empty picture. And the only people that made out on it were the demolition and the recyclers, and, you know, but what do they got? They got nothing. And unfortunately, I think that, that I believe that whatever you have to do to change the restrictions, I think that's probably the heart of this, of this future of this property because that is the town. And without that, I think the town is going to have a negative impact as far as publicity goes and an overall view, it's a, it's a mistake. I mean, with all the brains and all the money that this country has, I believe there's got to be better solutions for that property because it's a work of art, and it would be a big, big crime to see it not there anymore. However, if it absolutely has to come down, oh, we'll take it. I hate to see it go, but the next best thing is to save what we can. I'm not looking for money to give you an adulation or anything like that. I'm just telling you that, telling you straight as I see it. Because, you know, it's a work of art, and I think you should really, whatever cost you're going to spend on demolition, a fraction of that would go to save the roof and to save everything else. You know, this guy was very nice, we had a great conversation, we tried and tried and tried to do something, and that was 20 years ago.
I can't believe you're here.
That's how much I love to do that.
This is a very prominent person in the preservation circles, he's Google's head, Evan Wong. I'm, you know, I'm very, very thankful that you came here and you speak as a boy and for our residents.
If there's anything I can do to help, I'd be happy to, you know, do it.
I'm just asking demolition, destroy demolition.
Well, there's better ways. I know, but I'm just saying this, I'm just saying that I would really, really take a step back. You should get people from outside the area, and believe you can raise interest, they believe the town can profit by it, play the cards right. I just think that the restrictions are hindering a work of art that I think is wrong. And I think you gotta, if you do all the, whatever case you gotta make, and say, listen, this is no hardship. And the preservation up there will go for it, I believe the council will support it. And I think you have a good route to take to save that building, and it's not going to take that much to do it. When I was there 20 years ago, the cost of saving it was a lot less. But unfortunately, deferred maintenance catches up with you. But anyway, thank you.
That's it, it was nice enough to help you out. What's going on, because I'm outside the community, I don't live too far from here, but I'm just saying, it's nice to, you're a resident. Community is a day, you gotta pay attention to what's going on here.
So anyway, thank you.
Are we changing the subject, or?
Is there other comments?
Right, okay. Robert Vassalotti, 32rd Street. I just would like to make an operational point that I think tonight, many people got up here and didn't mention their name or their address, but I think that's kind of standard for the CD players, I don't know that. At any rate, I'm a resident for years, and I just wanted to speak to a couple of points. A, I'm really happy that the idea that we're going to move ahead with the used-in-road situation, and I think it's the wisest choice. I'm really happy that someone who's actually in the demolition business spoke about saving this precious building because I've been fighting for it myself for years on the first St. Paul's committee. And the idea that this is a priceless gem is absolutely true. Saving pieces is not the same as saving that whole space. I would like to see young people in our town be able to walk through this building. Some people were fortunate to go to school there. I'd like to see young people involved in that building, the way these plans demonstrate for all these different activities. Young people are very seldom in this room, but they have a voice and they're concerned. I teach young people at college, and they, they, when I'm in the second class, they were appalled. And these are kids from all over New York City, all across America, around the world. And they say, Professor, you're, you're fighting the safest building since when? 1993? I said, well, I got involved in 2000, okay? But for 22 years you're fighting, why do they even want to wreck it? 99% of my students think it's absolutely ridiculous to even consider demolition. They, some of them want to move in and say, we can make a dormitory out of this. All I'm saying is, it's the right step is to save this building, okay? This gentleman mentioned Greystone in New Jersey. A friend of mine who graduated Garden City High School lives out there, he's a professor at a college out there. And he's, he's telling me that everyone's appalled with the fact that psychiatric institution was destroyed. It was an entire campus of buildings, not just one building, there's many buildings that were destroyed, and they were all beautiful. But a college campus, in fact, colleges were interested in taking that space, and it never happened. There was a lot of funny things that went on with that demolition of Greystone in New Jersey. In fact, his son did a report on it, which was quite interesting for his son to do that in his college of years. And he was appalled at what he discovered about the Greystone back area demolition and funny money that went off. At any rate, your RFP did call for demolition, so if those were, if that was approved tonight to cost it out, the RFP for, for Westerman, Westerman's response said, we're going to price out demolition. So, you know, it's not like it's been forgotten about, demolition. However, I think it should be forgotten about because keeping this building is what we really should be doing. That being said, I do like to thank the committee that's been working on this, they've been tireless in the plans and everything that's going on, it's just unbelievable. Now, one other point on the agenda, if I could just make a complete switch to actual agenda because there's so much on here, and that is the Public Works. This is addressed to Public Works and Mr. Jeff Bird regarding the council regarding the cable vision and the remote optic line terminal that they want to build in front of the Public Works facility. Yeah, we're talking about historic buildings. The Public Works facility is the water, isn't that the water building over there on 11th? Yeah, well, that's a historic building, and it's quite beautiful. So I don't know what it means to build it in front of that building, but it's quite a nice building.
Mr. Vassalotti, it's not the waterworks building on 11th Street.
It's not.
There's three locations in New York City, in Altice, in Cape Town Village Four. They can put these... They can put these boxes by right into the right way, they don't need the board's approval at all.
Right.
This agreement tonight was a third location because I went around town with them, I blurted the board's request, went around town with them. They want to put them like a new life bar, as soon as you come onto the new vessel, they had it right on the corner, right near the sidewalk. It's now being pushed back against the, at a sign, they're turning maintenance doors away from the road so when people work on it, it'll just seem there, camouflaged and bushed. So they could have put it where they wanted, but they worked with us to put it away. The second location on North Chain, St. James Street, same thing. We put it between property lawns, it's not in front of someone's lawn division, we put it behind every green tree, again, this is the duty. This third location is down the DPWR, which is close to the community pool.
Ah, okay.
And the DPWR.
Okay, so it's not by the Waterworks.
Right, so when you go past the DPWR exit, they had it right down the corner. We had about 30 foot setback there where we already had some bushes. So if this location is tucked in there, at least around, you can't even see it.
Okay, good, thank you, thank you for clarifying that. But the other thing is while we're in contact with them on this project and looking for our cooperation, is it possible that we put in there somewhere a rider that says, could we remind them to fix some of the junction boxes, those green plastic plates that are on many people's outer front lawns and curbs that are cracking and breaking and trip hazards all over the village? I could probably count 10 of them all over town. I guess they're junction boxes that are in there. But they are such accidents waiting to happen, I don't know how someone's here that hasn't soothed the village by falling in one of those things. Could we kindly ask them to fix those?
Okay, so two things. They're all over the island, right, so?
Yeah, but I'm concerned about the ones in New York City.
I got a call from a resident on Stewart and Washington, last time I was here out there, back the semester running out there. We called Altice, they replaced it in a couple of days. So if you have one of those things, just tell us, we'll call them. One of the things that came out of this relationship with these bolt boxes is that I now have corporate contacts in New Jersey and on the island here who offered to help with anything we need help with. So if you have a location where a broken box, let us know, we'll call again. I can ask them, can you send me down and look at all the boxes, but I think?
Right, okay, good. I appreciate that and I understand that, and you know me, I'm the first to call and write on something, okay? But it sits in front of other people's houses, I can't believe they don't call anyone about it. And it sits there. So my other point is that someone who doesn't live there is going to get themselves hurt or broken ankle, okay? The other thing is, I don't know why it's up to us as individuals to have to call on these kinds of things. Where a company of that magnitude is making that kind of money, can't have someone go around section by section, they know where the junction boxes are, do a yearly inspection and say, you know what? Our guy went out, there's 10 boxes to be replaced in this quadrant of Garden City, we're going to replace them. I think it's their responsibility to do this, not every citizen to call about it.
A lot of things are reactive and then just about proactive, I won't make that much.
Because I think it might be our time since we're being kind enough to give our space for this new device here. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments on Zoom or in the audience? Okay. I can move on to the approval of the minutes of previous board trustees meetings. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the special review of September 7th, 2022? Second. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the special review of September 7th, 2022? I'll make a motion when you're done. All favor? Aye. Motion passes. Move on to the formal agenda. I have some documents that are pending to various board intermissions. Has the board of the 120s agreed individually or in total? I appoint Bill Menandakis as Associate Justice to begin this term. This evening, to replace Associate Justice Phil Carrion, who has resigned his position as of September 13th, 2022. On behalf of the board trustees, I would like to thank Associate Justice Carrion, who is prime Associate Justice. It's been my honor to know him. Do I have a motion to appoint Bill Menandakis as Associate Justice? I'll make that motion. No, no, please turn it back. Next, I would like to appoint Mayor McGuire to the Library Board of Trustees. Ms. McGuire represents Mr. Charles Murphy, whose term expired on December 31st, 2021. I thank Mr. Murphy for his deep service on the Library Board. And welcome to thank Ms. McGuire for volunteering her time to the village. Do I have a motion to approve the appointment? Second. Yes, okay, very good. All of the end, sorry. I would like to reappoint Mr. William Lees as an alternate member of the Art and Casual Design Review Board. Mr. Lees's term expired April 5th, 2021. Thank you, Mr. Lees, for continuing to serve on this board and giving so much of your time to the village. Do I have a motion to approve this appointment, this request? I'll make a motion. We'll go with him. We're waiting for the end, right?
Yeah.
View on lock, read them all, and then we'll vote. Thank you. I would like to reappoint Celia Peterson as a member of the Art and Casual Design Review Board. Ms. Peterson's term expired April 5th, 2021. Thank you, Mrs. Peterson, for your support. Next would be to appoint James Fowler as a member of the Art and Casual Design Review Board. Mr. Fowler replaces Phil San Antonio, who resigned from his board in February. I thank Mrs. San Antonio for serving on this board for six plus years. I also thank Mr. Fowler for volunteering his time to the village. Next is, I would like to reappoint Brian Paradine as a member of the Zoni Board of Appeals. Mr. Paradine's term expired April 5th, 2021. Thank you, Mr. Paradine, for continuing to serve on the board and for giving so much of your time to the village. Next is, I would like to appoint Christine Reel as a member of the Zoni Board of Appeals to replace Mr. John Argino, whose term expired April 4th, 2022. I thank Mr. Argino for serving on this board for the past 14 years. And I welcome Ms. Reel and thank her for volunteering her time to the village. Lastly, I would like to appoint Alex Bukowski as an alternate member of the Zoni Board of Appeals. Mr. Bukowski will replace Mr. Draw, who recently resigned. I thank Mr. Draw for serving on this board for the past 13 years. And thank Mr. Bukowski for volunteering his time to the board. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, it should be noted that in each one of these cases, the term is a term that expires as noted in the agenda. And depending on the board, the terms are for a different number of years.
And I want to approve those. Second. Number one, consent calendar. I'm just inviting the floor item number four, the next board meeting, which will be October 13th.
I'd like to make a motion to remove 4, 5, 7, and 21.
Let me just make this motion first, for sure. As the official information go by St. Paul's Committee and questions we serve in the first place, your issue of the art page will be aforementioned. We will receive first new questions after the end of business on Mondays, 2/19, will vote to be held at the October 13th, 2022. What other items do you want to add to the vote?
I'm actually making a motion to remove 4, 5, 7, and 21 for discussion in a separate vote.
Yes, and as to?
So as to second, we have to vote to be up.
And my second.
4, 5, 7, and 21. If you go back on, we can both know and then, if you want to back on at a future time.
We're going to have a discussion.
What was the special update?
Well, first we will vote to have a discussion to remove the discussion.
Since it's an application by a trustee to remove it from the consent calendar, we then vote on the remaining items on the consent calendar. And then what we do is go back and either debate or vote on the individual items separately.
Don't we have to re-take them all?
Yes. That usually has to be requested before.
Okay, so then we can vote on the remainder, yes?
Is fourth line?
7, 21.
With regard to the?
So we're clear because I know we have changes in the agenda. Are they still, four is the Westerman?
Fourth line, 7, 21.
Five is the change to the rules and procedures. Seven is the forensic investigation. And 21 is the cleaning of St. Paul's.
So with regard to those items that remain on the consent calendar, I make a motion that they be voted. All fruit?
Now, you can address each item by all four.
As to number five, I don't support that. I don't think giving the mayor more power over the agenda is the appropriate move to make by the board, given recent events. As to number 21?
Should we just have discussion on that and vote until we see it clear?
We're going to, sure, yeah. All right, fine, that's number five.
I agree with that, with what your rules and regulations are. At this time, any trustee can put an item on the agenda, they have the right to do that. I think it's a very important right, as in recent months I've seen two elected trustees having difficulty getting their items on the agenda. So I would very much oppose a change at this time to the rules and procedures that would make it more difficult for trustees to get items on the agenda.
As am I.
So do you want to vote on the item?
Now, the first question I had is, what's the proposed change?
Proposed change is consistent with village council's proposal.
Oh.
Actually, there were a couple of proposals.
Well, that's the whole problem.
There was a proposal floating by trustee Chirino, and there was one denied, sent around the square.
That's why I said it was yours, the attachment was yours to the minutes. So I was correct in saying it was yours. It was yours to give more power to the mayor, and I oppose that. And based on the comments here, so do four other trustees, so that's five in opposition. Should we vote?
So make a motion to?
I'm not sure, Charlie, what we're voting on.
The agenda that?
No, I know the agenda, but what are we proposing?
To leave it as is.
Oh. To reject it. So we're opposing this change in rules and procedures. At least five, at least five trustees are opposing it. And it will just leave the rules and procedures the way they are, which theoretically allow any trustee to put any item on at any time, in theory. But then just in gathering about, when you wrote this change, what was the intent?
Well, I think the intent told from what I wrote, what trustee Chirino wrote, was to try to give some, try to give some better view of the agenda items. Here for this, you know what, you put items on the agenda, that's the discussion only. Just because something's on the agenda or somebody places something on the agenda, doesn't mean it's going to be passed, doesn't mean it's going to be approved. But I think what I wrote, I did a couple of things. Number one, it still allowed trustees to put items on the agenda. It didn't prove you couldn't do it. I think it suggested that two or more trustees received an item on the agenda, should have been on the agenda. I think the point was that for an item to be considered, it should be showing perhaps some support more than just one trustee. I suggested two trustees support placing an item on the agenda.
I don't think anybody thinks that's not a dramatic change. Right now, one trustee can put theoretically anything on the agenda. You were doubling the requirement to put something on the agenda. And that's, that's one of the reasons I'm opposing that change.
And I think what you're not mentioning is the language you had in there, that the mayor could change the wording, which we've seen happen. The item could be changed in a way that could materially?
But again, when you put something, if you put something on the agenda, you're not obligated, you're not, if the mayor or any trustee puts something on the agenda, you're not obligated to vote for the item as it was placed on the agenda. It just gives a basis, at least a starting off point. And you know, you can amend that agenda item, you can vote it down. There's no obligation that you pass exactly what is the verbiage of the agenda item.
That's exactly.
It's the, my intent was to bring some clarity to at least getting a starting point on the agenda. Putting an item on the agenda and having a starting point, that doesn't make it an ending point. You have, you have to go, what do you do to change that?
We know that, and that's, I think, why it's less necessary to make a change. It's just putting an item on the agenda. It's a simple matter and I think it's important that trustees have that right to do it.
Then you have, then you have the issue of competing items on the agenda. And what do you do then? Somebody, another thought I run into this is that somebody has to at least formulate the agenda item. You have two different trustees or four different trustees putting items on the agenda in different forms. How do you select, or do you select which one of those items is the one that's put on the agenda for that jumping off point for discussion?
Well, to address that issue, part of the reason that we got to this point was that there were the desire to have competing items on the agenda. According to our rules, the mayor sets the agenda, the trustees have the opportunity to put the item on the agenda. Accordingly, my suggestion was that if you have two competing items, they both go on the agenda. If they both deal with the same issue, it becomes number one, at 1A. That's it, so they both go on the agenda. I did not believe that the need existed to have multiple trustees support the agenda items. So that was my suggestion, but.
Yeah, I think anyone who wants to put on the agenda should be able to, they must be competing.
So, yeah.
Roll signs, just leave it as it was?
Yeah, that can be done as if the mayor can still put a different competing agenda item under the present rules.
Okay, that's fine, so go on.
Well, that, see, that wasn't the issue. The question is who actually sets the agenda and the item on the agenda. So under our rules, the mayor sets the agenda. So even though another trustee submits an item, it would be 1, 1A, which is the only thought that I had.
Again, once you have a jet, something on the agenda, that's your starting off point. I don't know that you need a 101A, or you need four or five different iterations of that agenda item. Have an agenda item, that's your starting off point for discussion. And you can adopt it, reject it, amend it, I don't know that you need.
All right, well, that's a more, that's a more trustee question than a legal question. We believe that every trustee's proposed agenda item should be public. We believe it furthers transparency to let the public know what agenda items have been proposed by trustees. That's our view, it's not a legal view, it's a board of trustees, it's a political view. We believe in transparency. All right, are we going to take a vote on this?
I'll make a motion to reject the request to amend the board of the rules and procedures of the board of trustees.
Number five. Number five. Moving on to? Number seven, that's the next one I want to take in for discussion. The Subcommittee of the St. Paul's Committee has requested a forensic audit of funds spent in the prior stabilization effort at St. Paul's. That request has led to an agenda item that proposes a financial investigation of money. of money spent on such improvements from 2017 to 2022. I don't know why the St. Paul's Committee is spending its time proposing to spend residents' money on a pocket ask stabilization efforts. The proposed letter of engagement indicates that phase one of this engagement may cost $50,000. I speak to raise a number of concerns I have about this proposed expenditure, including procedure, objective cost, and available resources. First, the procedure directs that the firm report directly to the mayor. When the VOT authorizes an investigation, the reporting should be to the VOT, not just to one person, which needlessly deprives the taxpayers of expertise. Certainly, the Board of Trustees' expertise on investigation and financial accounting is not live with the mayor. For example, I have lectured nationally and internationally on fraud investigations and forensic accounting. Second, I am unclear on the objective of such an investigation. If someone has evidence of criminal activity, it should be reported to law enforcement. If the investigation is simply a search for failures in process and inadequate work, an outside firm is not necessary. As for cost, if phase one is to cost $50,000, this will, in my experience, why these such investigations quickly morph into a six-figure taxpayer expense? Which brings me to available resources. The VOT can simply direct the village administrator, treasurer, and the building department to create a list of the vendors, the amount they were paid, the work they were to do, whether the work was certified as complete before final payment, and whether final payment was made. That will give the VOT an overview of the amount involved and the work that was to be done. In sum, I will not support this expenditure of funds. I think both the VOT and the St. Paul's Committee should be looking to make proposals for the future. Not ferret out facts to make accusations about the past.
Thank you, I agree with you. Make a motion.
I do agree that whatever report or whatever investigation is done should be reported back to the board. The question is, should we have an investigation be made? And in fact, who should shepherd that investigation? That was my fundamental question. So how do we get that done if we're not gonna... Anybody do it?
This is the first I'm hearing about Mal Giesens going through the facts. Unless there's missing information, I'm gonna be the first I'm hearing of tonight. So if there is information, we should probably know.
My question is, can the village do this with the personnel task? That's my real question.
So to that's...
If that's the case, then you can save $50,000.
So the first question is, a long wish move. You knew what was coming to you. The question is, what resources do you need in order to compile an answer to the question of, you have a contract, we have substantiation for that contract, somebody obviously signed off on, paid for that contract. What else would you in fact need in order to give the board an idea whether the work... Not that the work was performed, but was the substantiation for the work adequate?
So the mayor asked me to compile all the contracts and all the invoices pertaining to those contracts, which I provided, which to him, yes, to...
Is it in digital format?
No, it was in hard copy, in binders. You know, we can have someone scan them. That's... We get those back. You can scan those, get them to digital. So those would show the purchase orders, the sign-offs of all the approvals for all those invoices as well. And those approvals would show, you know, who signed off on the work that was completed.
Now, so the next question, of course, is, as a result of the work that you performed in compiling it, did you reach any conclusions that we should go further on that issue? Or should we provide it to another to give this board some conclusions as to what the documentation shows?
I think that's a question for the mayor. He reviewed the documents and had questions on, you know, the...
I know the initials you have at the end of your name are not the ones that he has.
Well, the financial payments pertain to the contracts that were signed, right? So the... All the invoices are audited by village auditor. And over the last year, we also have an independent claims auditor. So all the invoices go back to what the contracts state, the hourly rates and the fees that were paid, right? So that's the financial aspect of it. Whether the work was on par, or, you know, something else, or whether the contracts that were signed were applicable, you know, were good, or whether bidding was done, which there was no RFPs done for engagement of these vendors, right? So those are different questions versus a financial question.
No, but I think, I mean, to make kind of figure what was done. Was there any substantiation of the delivery of what was said to be done? If, for example, did they have itemized bills where we made sure that they could pay the workers or paid the workers? Or was it just an invoice?
Well, the invoice, it depends on the vendor. Some of them were paid on fixed fees per the contract. So there were no itemized invoices in terms of timekeepers and such. On other invoices, there were some itemized timekeepers, because that's how the contract was set. Which are hourly rates per the timekeeper by the type of person performing the work.
But beyond that, what about the actual validation of the work that you have been... Well, it's one thing if someone says they're working a three-hour week, they only work 35 hours, that's one thing. If you're paying somebody to build a wall, and you're gonna pay them when the wall's built, the wall not built, and you paid them, it's a different situation. So that substantiation of the delivery of whatever the product was then done, paying them.
Right, so every invoice before we pay it must be signed by the department head, right? So the department head would sign off on the work.
And there's some serenading is already as well, right?
They're auditing the invoice against the contract, right? So they will be looking at the rate, and they will be looking at the authorization, if there's someone authorized in the village that certifies that the work was completed. So in our case, that would be the department head or village administrator signing off on those invoices.
To use trustee Marciano's example, if somebody building a wall, if they were supposed to build a 20-foot wall, but in fact it was only a 15-foot wall, that would not be reflected in the paperwork. So having a forensic economist or accounting firm, it may need necessarily be someone who is in the trade to determine whether the scope of work for which they were paid was in fact performed.
Bruce, I have something. There's a critical component here that's missing. That is that the village superintendent wasn't involved in building the second.
I'm agreeing with you.
But that's a big issue.
So...
It's a very big issue, because he would determine what work was supposed to be done based on the drawings he had in the construction, and the specifications.
So the... So if I understand correctly, the subject matter of this is that the individual retained by the village in order to perform and to oversee the performance of the work was outside the scope. So it was an independent, for instance, project superintendent. Question...
This case is the construction manager.
The manager, very likely, yes, so.
So theoretically, what we are looking for is to determine if the construction manager properly supervised and signed off on the work it was supposed to. And I don't see that we are going to get the answer to that question from an accountant. So I believe that whatever engagement we intend to make will have to be somebody with the experience to determine if the work that was to be supervised and done was in fact done or not done. So under that, I think the retention of a forensic accountant may not necessarily be the right person. We'll have to figure that one out. But I can't support your seven. Because the statute of limitations is really pretty close to being expired. So with regard to item number seven, I move that it not be approved.
Next one is number twenty-one, which is a cleanup service for St. Paul's. Having been the trustee who asked about removing the fence, now that we had done all this work on the roof, to stop pieces of roof from falling on people, and having been told that the only valid reason that I was given that evening was that there were falling bricks, and you couldn't take down the fence because of the danger presented by the falling bricks. I think this, for starters, this cleaning St. Paul's is the cart before the horse until we receive a memo indicating the evidence that bricks have been falling, and a proposal to stop the falling bricks. Because I certainly don't think we should be cleaning the building, for starters, if no one can approach it because of the falling bricks. Why don't we resolve the falling brick issue, remove the fence, which is what I asked to do at a meeting months ago, and then take a look at whether we want to do some cleaning? Let's not clean a place that the public can't approach because of the danger of falling bricks.
Does that mean you need an update on any falling bricks?
I don't have any falling bricks update economy. But there's nothing where it's falling there. The safety of... We've had a few issues with the building. A couple of breakings. I'm not sure who's breaking in the building. But there's still graffiti being done on the fourth floor. A couple of windows have been kicked in. So the kids are jumping the fence and getting in, trying to get into the building. Commissioner, I'm not sure if you have anything filed with that. But our past contractor witnessed a couple of the openings of plywood that was secured for windows that were kicked through, and a couple kicked into the building.
That's not a reason to keep a fence up. And I'm not gonna debate this with you. You had mentioned the falling bricks as a reason when I brought up, why can't we remove the fence having spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on the roof so that pieces of the roof would not be falling and hitting people? And you indicated falling bricks was a danger to people, and that's why the fence couldn't be removed. I can assure you, I did not credit the fact that your comment about the delinquents in town, because I believe that we don't put fences around things because we can't depend on law enforcement to protect them. We don't do that. If there's no falling bricks, a reason to keep the fence up is not because of some perception of graffiti and juvenile delinquents and people entering the building. That's something that can be addressed by law enforcement.
But I didn't say there wasn't any falling bricks. Potentially, they could be falling bricks. I'm happy we don't do inspection on the building. We hardly do that doing inspection.
Well, I missed that, where you said the potential for falling bricks that evening.
There are loose stones and bricks on the building. Witnessed by myself. There are stones that are witnessed on the building that can potentially cause harm.
There is two things I want to point out. And one is, and I don't know if it's still true, because there's a lot of roofwork, but there are shingles that flow over during the highways. There's actually a little house behind the building that has a shingle embedded in the roof. So we know used to send workers there in highway conditions. So we just worry about that. And... But there were shingles. Oh, there is a parapet on the west side of the valley toward Hoover Falls. So we had barricades there. Oh, by Dan'ses. It was notified by George Hometzetti. And so there were parapets that, you know...
Maybe I missed something? But this is an item only to clean the inside of the building? Yes, I'm not really sure about bricks, although...
Falling down the fence. Defense is just safety. I like to keep the fence up. As building superintendent, I recommend to keep the fence up. Whether you want to take it down, it's up to the board. But I recommend you guys keep the fence up.
Well, what's wrong with... One item, this is a cleaning mission in the interior of the building.
Correct, that's correct, Mr. May. But I was asked about the fence.
So I think by cleaning the floors, we'd have walk... By cleaning the inside, we'd have walk-throughs including...
That is...
...vipers on the...
The item on the agenda, the purpose of the item on the agenda is to actually clean the center core of the building. Okay, that's two ways, right and left, and the center core of the building underneath the staircase, up onto this first platform, to have decent utility channel, to allow residents to actually come across and see the center core of the building, which I inspected. I believe that it's safe to enter the core of the building to take... So a resident can actually witness the beauty and the architectural of the building. That was the recommendation.
Right, and I just want to make a comment as to why I can't support this at this time. And it goes back to the statement that the group of us made earlier as to the secrecy that surrounded this whole, the work of the committee. The fact that it wasn't until just recent weeks that after we really put in an email, written objections to the secret process and the mayor's refusal to allow the trustees to attend the St. Paul's Committee meetings, that somewhat of a change was made. And I'd say it's not a sufficient change. The change was that of the five people who objected in writing to the lack of access to the information, just one of them was made a liaison to the Board of Trustees Committee. I just, as a result of the fact, I viewed what's out in the lobby, but I was invited to no meetings. I was not provided with the RFP. A resident who spoke earlier had foiled it and sent it to me. That's how I saw the RFP that went out from the village. That's disgraceful. We were sent language by our... From the building department. It actually was different language than the language that was in the RFP that the foil resulted in. So I'm not gonna get into that. I can't really even begin to piece together everything that's transpired, why we're getting conflicting documents. I'm looking to move forward. But I think your statement was pretty clear that we need full access and transparency now, and I can't be any other way. So we see an item on here for cleaning up. And of course, we would have no idea why we would be spending nearly $50,000 to clean the inside of the building. But I certainly understand trustee Kelly's point. Why are you inviting residents in if it's not safe to walk near the building? But we won't go into that debate of the falling bricks. But at this point, in the future, when we're all brought up to speed and we understand what's going on and what the steps forward are, this could always be brought up again, and there may be a reason to clean the building, to help the public in. But I do not support it now, because I don't have the information and background knowledge to support it. That's my reason for the vote now.
To the contrary, it is a... To the contrary, it is a... I don't have objection to cleaning the building, but in fact, believe that the building should in fact be cleaned because ideal litigation of people getting injured in buildings for a living. There are many different laws which would and do have the potential to cast the village in liability if you bring in somebody, if it's a worker, if, God forbid, the police department or the fire department goes into the building because there are miscreants who go in. If there is a potential hazard that exists in the building, which I understand does exist, then I would suggest that we remediate that condition. It is not for me to say whether people are going in or whatever else. If it's a hazard, if it's a hazard, the exposure to life and limb should take precedence as to what did or did not occur in the future and the dissemination of information. That's not my call. I was put on the committee two weeks ago, but my purpose in voting in favor of this is just to make sure it's clean. But I want to have anybody go in there, not until we get more information as to what we're doing, how we're doing it, but the building has to be clean, because I don't want to be the one who has to say that, sorry, we're in litigation because somebody got injured. That's all.
Do you have the building's police unit in the building? Do you have the fire department in the building? Do you have people from the building?
The building is alarmed, and when the alarm goes off, somebody's going in. Will the cleanup... Will the guys, will the cleanup make the building that much more safer? Will it do what trustee Dura hopes it does, make us a little safer from litigation?
We can, we can deem the building, potentially, if we do clean it, we can deem the building for hard hat use and probably PVE, the residents in and export. You can put signage and everything else, but the building should be cleaned, because a lot of it is left over from previous projects we were taking care of, and it is hazardous to, for anybody to walk through.
I think we can revisit. My hope is that within, I know the deadline is being, talking of a short deadline before putting out another RFP, which I don't really think would be the way to go. I'm hoping though, we do immediately get all the information that we haven't been provided with over the last ten months, and that we can start delving into it and asking the questions we need to ask, and if there comes a point that we want to have people in the building, we'll talk about this item. I just think it's premature tonight.
Just one question to Bruce's point since we're at that. What do we do if Commissioner Jackson's officers go in there and get hurt? What do we do here? I'm not sure. What about, what if there's a fire?
I don't think until the St. Paul's...
What if there's a, hold on a second, what if there's a fire? And the, you know, our volunteer firemen go in there and get hurt? These are all possibilities, that's the... I'm just throwing it out there, because Bruce brings up a good point.
I think this was...
Because the, the village is liable, from what I understand.
I think this was for the tour, and I don't think, it's been the same situation with the police and fire for thirty years.
Yeah, they don't like it.
Yeah, it's kind of like, it's kind of a good situation. It's kind of like the restaurants, it wasn't a good situation, they're violating the law. And, you know, so I think in this case, don't look at what was, look at what we are, just so we don't have any, any liability. The town, the town is liable.
I was saying, no, we're saying no currently, but doesn't mean we're saying no.
No, I'm just wondering, because Bruce brought up, what if you're a fireman and you get hurt?
I think debris is within thirty years.
No, but if it happens now.
Debris, that required stabilization project. Let's be clear about this. This is not thirty years old. This has been rededged by fire contractors all over the floors and tanks and clabs of guest construction material.
There's a clabs, there's a clabs in the vestibule that we reconstructed, so probably part of that, might be some of the old roof, unless you're aware of it.
It's not a great state department.
I'm good with not bringing anyone in now and revisiting this when we...
Well, you have to bring in, you have to bring in people that are going to provide this sort of cost reports. So you're going to have to parade those people through, right? They're going to have to sign something that says, we're not responsible.
Well, they do currently, may as well wait for a time.
Even at night, but it's no danger set.
We had an incident where Chief Vernon talked, we had a training incident on one of our buildings where the stairs fell through, as luckily, they saved the firemen from injury. So these are things that can happen.
We haven't actually voted yet on the other issue as far as the...
That's my concern.
Yeah, proposal, so I think we can, we'll be back in a month, and we can talk further at that time, and I hope to know a lot more. I know a lot of work's been done, and I'm looking forward to learning more and discussing all of these things.
And you feel though, that the liability we're under now?
I don't think we're, I don't think we should be...
That Bruce brought up. I'm just, I'm wondering, you know, anything about that? Because I'm concerned, I didn't think about that.
Tom, as Terry mentioned to you, yes, there might be more debris now because of what was done, you know, fairly recently, but it's been this condition for a long time. And if anybody, I certainly am concerned about liability situations. I think we certainly will have to get to this point, but I think we can certainly defer.
I'm just curious, what if something happens?
By the way, how many of us were seen before we drove in?
I mean, we don't, all the fires that happened, we never predicted, it just happened. So that's my concern.
It is my concern.
Making progress, I would, I vote to defer, but we can, all the votes are tied. I'll make a motion to defer just till the next meeting, or we have to... So we can come back on, so to deny the request for authorization or the transfer of funds for cleaning services at this time.
We don't have estimates coming into the building. There's a door.
What elections say all that differently? Makes no sense.
How do you get the pictures?
I made a motion.
Second motion?
All the papers. Has it occurred to the next meeting? No, it was denied, it was denied, very classy. Then we have the last one, which is number four, which was...
Number four, pull off the agenda.
Okay, so it's a question of whether we're deferring it or...
Which one will be agenda? There's no vote.
I'm just a little concerned that we're going to end up in the same spot.
Are you talking about number one?
Number four.
It's been pulled, it's not deferred, because it's going to be rewritten once we get everything in.
Okay, so it's not deferred.
And the board's going to get their input, right? So that it goes that way.
No, actually, to that point, I couldn't possibly give input on Monday, because I haven't given anything as of...
So what you wanted?
I don't know until, like...
Well, look at the current bids, read the current bids and see what else you can do.
I've read the bids, but I think we need to be brought to speed, and we could send that detailed email, and we need to meet with people on the committee and understand the process that we kept out of then, residents have been kept out.
We had the opening session, you showed up, yes, you showed up.
I wasn't invited in person, so...
No, no, everyone was invited. Just these, Mr. Green was in charge, I think everybody's invited, that was...
The difficulty that we are facing by delay is that the room that the committee has reserved at the high school is coming up quickly.
I just want to be clear that I didn't miss any meetings, I was not, I didn't get any...
No, you did not miss any meetings.
What is the date of that high school meeting?
The date before the next board meeting.
Maybe we can have some kind of special meeting before.
Or maybe that can be some sort of a town hall discussion when we're all at dispute as far as, so the community understands as well as us as far as what uses we're considered, this whole process and letting people, I don't think we, I think it's, to rush to the cost estimator before you've heard from residents, doesn't make sense.
The residents haven't involved, they didn't inform, we have Facebook, we have Instagram. There's a lot of information out there that the residents have tapped into. Maybe you haven't seen it, but I can see it's been out there for quite a while. Is anybody here from the communication committee, have they left? They really need to speak.
We can actually get all those emails that they received, because when I did the lead floor, I just compiled the document with all of the community, but that would be helpful to all of us. We haven't been provided any of that. I have personally not heard of it, people have been complaining to us, spoken to, and really, until this came up, didn't...
I will have early, if you have any contact, we'll be informed. When will the committee get together to get the coverage? Hopefully, maybe soon, so we can...
Well, I think we can reach out to the legislature to get more information.
Because it was... The reason why I said it was something, yeah. The various evidence.
So perhaps by Monday, we could get, all the trustees could at least get all the village information, the different RFPs or RFPs that went out, any correspondence we have, what this discussion has been to get to here, and any input that has been received by the village about this, and then we'll speak to the policy committee as well.
Do you know, you don't, or you don't have a whole committee that has, you have different parts? And again, the process is a whole process. Some committees have more information than others, some committees are dependent on other committees to provide the information, so it's a working part. Now we have much more information, and I would definitely have community chairs contact.
Are we in agreement that all the meetings will be open at this point? No, no.
Well, the meeting is open, right?
I think, I think it's fair for us to say, meetings are all, meetings are all open now for the community.
Yeah, I think, I think you should be able to go to any meeting, and as you know, if you serve on board, board's always assigned, usually assigned in base for our community finance committee. So I think it's appropriate to have a committee, but I think it's also appropriate to have a... Committees are a normal process.
It's all being publicized, on all of the websites, and all that's going on.
There are opening sessions and there are presentations, so that's the, that's the process, the opening sessions.
The minor issue here that I have is where is it going to be held, and how many chairs? Because I know in the meetings that I went to, we ran out of chairs real quick.
Well, Fridays, I think all the trustees could have taken them down.
But the meetings that I went to on Tuesday night, Tuesday night, was at the historical building, and that did not have sufficient room for anybody than those that were there.
Probably only there, but here. Right?
Yes, Robert Essladi, thirty-two bricks in. And just to follow up here, and I'm really curious, sitting here listening to this about the cleanup of the building, maybe I'm way off base, but, and there's legality to it, but we have a department of sanitation, and I'm just wondering, you have really capable guys out there, women probably, if you go in there and clean it up with the proper gear, maybe, you know, I know they don't pick up our garbage with helmets, but give them some helmets and the proper gloves and the proper protective equipment and masks and put our own people in there. I, I don't know what the legality is, but we have the manpower, just don't get it. That's one comment, and then I have another comment. Is there any feedback on that comment?
They don't like to work.
They just said the police and fire can't go in, why would you send sanitation in?
Police and fire would go in, they have to. They would go in, but is there any legality in why we can't send in our own sanitation department?
Is there lead paint, is half of this material...
Right, so we give them the proper helmets, masks, you know?
We're not set up for that, it's not something we're going to investigate, we're not set up for that. That's why we're hiring this contractor, that they are capable, trained, certified.
You know, as long as we give it as a consideration, and as long as we feel it can't be done, and that's why we have to spend the money, fine, but I mean, my first vote would be using a house personnel. Okay, so my other real point was, but I had to jump in.
Talking about non-agenda.
Yes, non-agenda. So this concerns the bridge at Cherry Valley, the railroad overpass in Tressel. It seems like they packed up and left. They put a sidewalk on the west side going underneath that underpass, but they did no sidewalk on the eastern side, which is now, just like it was years ago, a mud bath, a quagmire of mud and breeding grounds for mosquitoes, and it is a mess. People pass that way to go to the administration building, students pass that way, and they have to go out into the street, go around the mud, and a mess, on a bicycle or walking, into the path of cars, and a very dangerous spot, and at night, very dark. All I'm saying is, there should be a sidewalk there, they didn't build it. It's a county road, I think we have to go after the county to get them to build it, or the railroad to do it, but there's no sidewalk on that side, and it hasn't been one for years. Really think it's a big mess to not have had the railroad do it, but now I think we need to go perhaps with the county or ourselves to really do a sidewalk over there. It's right near the middle school. People traverse that spot constantly, it's really dangerous. The other thing is...
I've worked that spot, you need a sidewalk there.
It's horrible.
It's dangerous, and it is money.
I really urge each of you to take a look at it, and it's absolute mess. It's right in front of our middle school, it's pretty bad. And, and all those underpasses need to be looked at, Nassau Boulevard, Denton, before an accident happens. There's no railings at Denton. Denton is a very strange pedestrian underpass now. The way it's left there, you're supposed to go to the crosswalks, which are thirty, forty feet off the corner, without any railings guiding you there, and then you would say that Nassau Boulevard, the same thing, the railings have not been completed there. There's weeds growing all over those sidewalks as you go underneath to the train, very high pedestrian traffic. Is the railroad going to finish it, the county going to finish it? And you know what the railroad told me the other day? The four quadrants of land next to the Tressel at Nassau Boulevard, it's county property, it's not theirs. They're not going to cut the lawn, they're not going to trim the weeds. They refused. I have the documentation in writing, if you want to see it. They're not going to cut those weeds. So now I have to go to the county to cut the weeds, so pedestrians can walk past to get onto the train in the morning? It's ridiculous. You guys have to look at those sidewalks down by the Tressel and the crosswalks, it's just dangerous. And the railings don't even go to the end of the corners of the sidewalks, the four spots.
You're talking about that and Amity Road?
That's all, and Denton. Denton needs a railing, Nassau needs railings, and Nassau needs trimming of the weeds, and they're saying it's not theirs, so...
We were trying, we didn't really want the sidewalk to begin with, if you recall when we were talking to them. There's a possible security problems, but they haven't...
Well, the sidewalk in Denton is there, it's needed, it's needed and it's there. I think Willis, they didn't put a sidewalk in, which is dark. The sidewalks there just needs railings to protect people and to guide them to the crosswalks. The crosswalks are off the corners.
Well, we've been trying to get them to do that.
Yeah, well, maybe we have to do it. Thank you.
Christine Mullany, one of Huntington Road, I just have a question. We had our lead line replaced on May ninth, my neighbors had it done about a week later, we both used to work it. We agree they did a great job, we paid the same price, okay? On May thirty-first, I, I contacted the village, I asked, do I have to do anything to get the refund on the permit fees, which you, you know, had declared, I guess, the... Okay, they said no, I didn't have to do anything, they'd get in touch with us by letter. The end of August, both my neighbor and I went down to the village separately to find out, you know, what was going on. A person in Public Works was... A person in Public Works was very nice, printed out something that said that Orchid had paid the village a thousand dollars. In my case, in my neighbor's case, again, a week later, Orchid had not paid the village a thousand dollars. So I said, well, what are we supposed to do? And I was told that the village hasn't made up, is still debating whether or not to return the fee to the residents or to return the fee to the contractors. Could you just clarify for me?
Yeah, nice. You wrote to me.
I did write to you.
And I immediately addressed it. It's Ralph to follow up on it. So Ralph, maybe you can filter in on that?
I gave it to Giuseppe. No.
Should I come back?
So the village had waived the permits and we compiled a list and we indicated whether they're using the contractor except for me. So I believe legally we should be paying the person who gave us the money. We can ask counsel if we can buy this. I gave it to the resident, but we're only going back where it was paid, right?
Right.
Then a question came up about sidewalks recently. We had, we compiled this. It only involves thirty homes. So we're one of the smaller people that did their lines before the people waived. So it's not like, because the people aren't paying the fees now. There were some people whose sidewalks got damaged and there was a question that a contractor told me that that we're charging for sidewalk permits, which in spite of what the four did, we should not be collecting the fees for those either. So I had, just last week, I asked the clerk in DPW, Jenny, to go back and make sure there were no sidewalk permits attached to these lead service line limits so that we make sure we return that money too. And recently, a member of the school's financing asked me if it was ready. And I said, as far as I'm concerned, they're ready to process. We have all the information. And then it's just a matter of verifying one last time and setting up the checks. I believe I'm not sure exactly what other due diligence might be needed by the financing department, but the list is finite. There are no sidewalk permits that were asked for, but it's just to get original permits. So whether we pay the resident or the contractor is a legal question and I don't know if we can make other arrangements. Do we have to pay the person who made the deposit? Or can we work out an agreement with the contractors to pay the resident back? We have to keep track of it. As long as we know we paid it back.
Yeah, well, like in my case, Orchid paid the village, but in my neighbor's case, Orchid did not pay the village.
So the other neighbor paid directly?
No, no, we, my neighbor and I both paid the same amount of money to Orchid and it included a thousand, five hundred dollar fees. Okay. When I checked with the village, I have something that said that the village received the fees from Orchid. In my neighbor's case, the village did not receive the fees from Orchid.
That's an Orchid issue.
So I mean, I don't know. So in my case, I'm just asking if you could, do I have to do anything else to get my money back from the village? Does my neighbor have to do anything else?
No, the goal was to, your own half requested the barbecue. A lot of times it lacks in the scene, but we will get the fee back.
Okay. And so I don't have to do anything else? My neighbor doesn't?
Sometimes.
If they haven't been paid, no, that Orchid didn't pay the village, my neighbor's fee, according to the village.
Well, then that refund will not, if Orchid did not take out a permit, it did not pay the.
No, they did the work. I don't know what.
They did the work perhaps, but didn't take out a permit, then we have no record to refund.
No, they have, the permit was done. It was the fact that I guess the village had waived the fees on May fifth and maybe because they were two weeks, two weeks after that. I was one week. Maybe Orchid, you know, just didn't pay it to the village. I don't know.
Only one that paid.
Right. So if the village didn't receive the permit, the village has nothing to return. So that's your neighbor would not talk to Orchid. In your case, you know, again, you know, the village received the funds from Orchid. So based on my discussions with previous counsel, I can have a further discussion with Mr. Fishburg, but you know, the village is obligated to return the fee to Orchid, right? So.
Orchid, okay. Now I'll have to get it from Orchid.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to do, because the person I spoke to said, they didn't.
What we wanted to do also is, the conversation started from once ago.
Yeah.
Because of the situation, when we paid Orchid, we also want to send a letter to the homeowner saying we just returned the CC. No, to have it.
That's right. Yeah, that's fine. I'll dial it up. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees, John Welk, Commissioner of Commerce. Council Fishburg, it's nice to see you again. I'll try to be brief. I know it's late. Tomorrow night is the last night of the promenade. Theme is the Big Apple Circus. It's one of our bigger ones. As a note of humor, it doesn't rain Garden City on Friday night for the last fourteen Friday nights. There's been a significant contribution to the economic vitality of downtown. At the end of each promenade, I take a barometric conversation with each of the businesses to see how they did during the promenade that evening. And the feedback has been certainly, certain Fridays are much higher than others, depending on the theme and the number of people that attend. I'd like to thank the DPW rec. I'd like to thank the police commissioner because over the last three weeks, actually fourth, the last three, fortunately or unfortunately, went out on social networking and we had a vast number of younger attendees than we've ever had in the past before. We were very reactive. I didn't put ads in the newspaper. I tried to scrub social media as best I could. We cautioned to tape the back area behind Dunkin' Donuts. I put on additional staff and the commissioner put on additional, additional police officers to help. Mitigated, we luckily didn't have too many incidences. I don't know if anybody knows this, a note of humor, we had some kids buy cake at Dunkin' Donuts, hollow it out, put it in a medium and blow it up. Very creative young people. To give you an update, the status of what's happening on the retail and business level. Four Flag Coffee opened up. This was their thirtieth location. Cheap City opened up. This was their fourteenth location. Sweet Greens is moving along. As you know, we're D good used to date. The Walk Street, the landlord just submitted an application to repair some steel so that they can now start moving forward on doing it. Noma, which was at, Noma is the restaurant that's going into where the old Groce Jewelers was, has finally gotten some documentation that was actually, I think, delivered yesterday or today. I'm not certain. I think it was today. I spoke with them earlier today. Morgan Stanley's construction is going well on the second floor. And the coffee shop, as we know it, on the corner by the railroad track is another coffee shop and hopefully they'll do as well as the other ones. We are not hosting a homecoming event in the tradition that we did in the past, meaning we will not have the homecoming vendors. Typically, what would happen is the vendors, as the commissioner would know, would get there at five thirty, six in the morning. They would not vacate the street till about seven o'clock. We are not having a discount this year, so it'll just be the parade. When the parade is completed, the street will then open up again. Parade is typically twenty-five to thirty minutes in length as the student bodies and the different organizations move through and that's it. And that's basically what's transpired. We have a very good mechanism to judge the validity of what we've been doing to. As you know, the chamber is charged with developing the downtown economy. And I use Pizzeria G as an example. As we all know, they came over from Culver Avenue. If you didn't know Culver Avenue, you had a fire and their pizzeria burned down. They were negotiated to come here. But each week that I go in and chat with them and I speak to the principals that own them, they say, John, you know, what's magnificent about this is we've been in Flora Park fourteen years. We've never had a community do anything like this. Each week consistently, Friday is, one Friday, he used an analogy that I thought was superlative. He said, we did more in one Friday than we did in a week in Flora Park. So I think we need to look at what that incident does and how it helps and how the dynamic of it is the better. And again, I can say this to you and I said it only twice because I'm glad I came tonight, but I just. I think it was a great night to show up. The feedback I get from outside the community, not only in my social circle, but from other chambers. I have other chambers call me on a recurring basis saying, John, what do you do? How do you do it? Tell us what it costs. Where do you get the talent from, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that, again, this in principle has one of the best, if not better, chambers in the state of New York. Thank you very much for your time.
Just one second.
Yes, sir.
It turns out that one of the incidents on the last time, one of the bicycles on Seventh Street that came very close to running over my wife. So to that extent, and I compliment Commissioner Jackson on his efforts, one of the recommendations at least I have made programmatically is that there be no bicycles allowed on Seventh Street. So to that extent, while I believe that the caution tape that was there was reasonably effective to keep the crowds there, not getting the bicycles on the street is just another opportunity because quite candidly, there were a lot of smaller children running around and the fact that none of them were run over by the bicycles was only credited to God.
We put up no bicycle signs trying to enforce it was another thing. I also put up a hundred videos of that signs. So I did put these signs up thinking it would somehow deter it. It appears, this is just an observation on my part of there, every Friday night from beginning to end, a great deal of the bicycles were older, younger children, okay, who didn't respond well to being disciplined by the police department and the staff that I had. And I can assure you, we tried diligently to prevent the bikes. It was just a very difficult challenge. This is the first time this has happened in the eight years that we've run the promenade. It just blossomed into this major event in a very quick period of time. And we all saw the potential and as I said, I did everything in our power to prevent it from even getting worse. And I saw the, I saw the potential for disaster, but luckily we did well. Hopefully tomorrow night, there'll be less. Also, I truly believe, looking at, having the people that I, that we use as volunteers, they're looking at social media. So they're giving updates. They say, John, this community, that community, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter. So they have it. Listen, I think it's great for parents that live outside the community and want to drop their kids off for free, like this. That's what it boils down to.
Well, the next issue is what do we do next year?
We prohibit bicycles.
Well, I'm just saying in general, what are your suggestions? I know that the board just approved a committee because that and outdoor dining is going to be one of the issues that should be and need to be addressed. And at least now we have the ones you can think about.
Right. And I just think that trustee Marsino earlier during the day about that, about that commission. So yes, I think there are issues that need to be discussed.
Also, John, we put in, as you know, an action plan date because of, after the promenade pulled and break garbage that was appearing inside the stores and stuff. So part of the action plan we put together included cleanups at like five, sixteen in the morning on Saturday.
Right.
And it's working well.
It's working very well.
So we're having very good feedback. Before that, we had, you know, issues that we tried to address. That being said, this is where you can help us. The restaurants, we're going to crack down on, you know, how they handle their outdoor cleaning. So I recommend and ask you, since, are you now the head of the Chamber of Commerce?
Yeah, I'm the president of the chamber, but I've been the chairman of the merchant professional ethos for fourteen years. So in effect.
So you're in a position to help us on this. I think in addition to us meeting with the different, you know, restaurant owners and eaters, that you ask them to keep their premises clean and clean up after themselves when their night finishes. So for example, if someone's working one of the bars till four in the morning, you know, working the door, they can certainly go out and make sure that everything's cleaned up because people hang out afterwards on the streets and they just throw things in the streets. So I think that'll be helpful for us going forward.
I agree. The one thing that seems to be a consistent pattern from all the restaurant owners is that when, and you know who they are. You can actually see the degree for which restaurants it is, fast food, how they deliver, the containers, whatever the case may be. The issue is they say, John, at the end of the night, because of the volume of cash register transactions we have, the amount of garbage that we've generated is filling up the containers. DPW, I'm sorry, the Department of Sanitation is coming through. But I'll give you an example. PJ at TCBY, very, very good point. He literally goes out with his spare, takes the big garbage bales and he empties them out and he takes them and ties them up and throws them out. He said, the problem is with the newer designed garbage bale, they can't access them to empty them or what have you. And you've all seen it. You go in, it's all thrown with garbage and things of that nature. There's nothing they can do about it. So unfortunately, our residents or visitors to the village just start throwing debris around because there's no place to dump. If we could have more of the old fashioned, they seem to work better from my observation than the newer ones. Well, the newer ones need to be, I don't know if they're compressing as they were designed to do.
And in addition, the, in that case, maybe they can put their own trash container inside like we do in our houses where they can.
I don't think anybody would be opposed to that.
Yeah, so maybe you can help them.
Not a problem. Say it again.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I believe in you. I've seen it on two, two, six Nassau Boulevard. I have been in the village since nineteen sixty-four and I've been in Nassau, Nassau Boulevard since two thousand, was that, no, that was nineteen eighty. So that's when I went to Nassau Boulevard. And I have been dealing with leaves and grass living and I put them out and the rule was you can put them out with your garbage. Well, I've been doing that for a long, long time. And then last year I got this. A warning from the police department that I put out, leaves on the day of garbage. I've been doing this for years and it appears they gave me this sanitation collection guidelines. Now, I don't know if you've seen them. I've got a few that you can pass around if you want. Not enough for everybody in the fridge, but if you see those. Now, on the sanitation guidelines that we get in mail, it says, there's no dates. You can put out your grass living. I hope you would add leaves to the glass grass living. And there's no date. There's no limitation. But on this one that I got, when I got my yellow notice, it has these dates and that's why I got this notice. So I hope you would consider adding not only grass living, but leaves and eliminating any dates that you can have there. Thank you.
I must concede good morning. Stephen Mullany, 139 Bedouin. While the MTA is in the village doing the bridge at Cherry Valley, is there any way that we can persuade them to redo the grade crossing at Cathedral? If you don't go three miles an hour over that, you know, you're picking up pieces of your car on the other side of the tracks. That's one comment. Hopefully someone could reach out to the railroad for that. The other, you know, sitting here all night and then hearing the different conversations between the trustees, it's a little disconcerting that there are members of the board that are left out of getting material, getting information, not getting meeting invites. Another trustee or the mayor saying that it wasn't true, that everyone got the invite. And then the third trustee saying, no, that trustee didn't get an invite. I think you all need to get on the same page. You know, it's a little embarrassing as a resident that the board is hitting that one. Thank you.
Can you get in everybody? I was really expecting a standing ovation after I spoke the first time, but to do it, I didn't think about it. Stephen mentioned being on the same page. I mean, I think that's a great idea. Going in the same direction. That's okay. There are a lot of homes in Garden City that have these big porches in the front. Imagine what it was like, life was like, prior to the leaf blower. Back then, people used to sit out and enjoy life and share information, okay? But now that we have the leaf blower, everybody stays in their house and nobody shares information and that's why there's so much confusion and just lack of understanding. It's the leaf blower, okay? I spend a lot of time outdoors and the noise is constant. It's never quiet. The leaf blower has a sound radius that is really very extensive. So you're always hearing something coming from somewhere. Either that or a lawnmower or a weed whacker or a hedger or the nix or the that, okay? If low income housing doesn't scream that the village or the country is going in the wrong direction, what will? Okay, there's something wrong, okay? My last point, this is something from the fire department. Pride service community. Pride, okay? Now, how much pride, okay? Let's talk about Seventh Street, okay? Do we agree that Seventh Street between Franklin and Hilton is the heart of the village? Correct? That's the heart of the village, where you have the promenade and everything? What sense does it make to use the heart of the village as a toilet for dogs? I spent a lot of time on Seventh Street. I sit on the benches and in no time at all, the dogs will come right up and pee right on whatever, whether it be a fire department, a mailbox, a pole, a traffic sign, a garbage can, whatever, okay? As long as you use the heart of the village as a toilet, what do you expect? And I need to get to the other stuff that dogs do, okay? I, I sit inside Starbucks in the morning and it's like a parade of people who bring their dogs to the heart of the village specifically to use the heart of the village as a toilet for their dogs. Now, this is disgusting and it's ridiculous. And if you think this village is going to continue with this type of protocol, I mean, forget about it. Because if you allow that, what else, what's worse? I don't see any of you gentlemen and lady, I'd never see any of you sitting on Seventh Street and experiencing this exposure. So maybe you don't know what I'm talking about, but it really is disgusting. You lose your self-respect, you lose your dignity, and what about pride? If you're working for the fire department, how much pride can you have putting out a fire when you look to that fire hydrant knowing that a dog's been peeing on it all day long? And if you're a mail person, knowing, well, you serve as a mail, which everybody depends on, how much pride do you have knowing that dogs pee on their mailbox all day long? Which they do. Thank you very much. Please think about it.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees and staff. I'm Scott Baller, I'm the municipal and ladies attorney, Farrell Fritz. I actually represent the Lord Taylor entity that is currently renovating from the Lord Taylor building. As you undoubtedly noticed, it is already under construction. I noticed that our request for a license agreement was on our consent agenda and would ostensibly been approved by the, by the motion earlier this evening. The reason I'm addressing it now is that we have something of an urgent situation with the other approvals that we still need for our project, specifically the final site plan authorization from this board. Over the last part of the better, part of a year and a half, we've been in front of every other board of this village, including your traffic commission, getting the approvals that we need to improve not only the building, but the surrounding sidewalk. The building actually sits right on the property line to the west, which it shares with your parking field. Part of our proposal for the new site plan is to replace the original concrete sidewalk that was there with another sidewalk, but also to embellish it with some landscaping and also some passive seating areas for public use. It'll still pretty much be a public plaza the way that it was before. But because those improvements are on the village's parking field, obviously we needed a license agreement, which you've now approved. However, we have a deadline of October 2nd to allow the large anchor tenant, the second quarter, which is Maureen Stanley, to start their build out. Unfortunately, we can't get them in there and they can't secure the funding that they need for their end of the project until we have a final site plan. So we were in front of your planning commission several months ago. In July, we filed a request for final site plan approval. We submitted the plans. We submitted a parking study for the off-site parking waiver that everybody on Franklin Avenue needs because we have no onsite parking. And basically, we've just been waiting to get in front of this board for final site approval. And I know it wasn't on today's agenda, but in light of the exigent circumstances, the fact that we've been at this now for a year and a half and the fact that you're now required to hold a public hearing and the improvements that we're seeking to, to put on the property are very innocuous. It's literally just landscaping, some seating areas and some new pavers. I was hoping that you could add this to the agenda for this evening and grant this approval that we need to move forward.
I'm not sure that the license agreement was approved. I asked it to be taken off the agenda. Right, because we don't have a signed license agreement. As far as I know, I asked it to be taken off the agenda.
Mr. Fishburg, we had a conversation earlier today where, where we considered, continued a conversation that we've been having for several weeks, that we would effectively approve conceptually the license agreement and then subject to finalization to your office and with the legal committee. And I know you've had several rounds of discussions with the legal committee, so I don't know why you're now saying it should have been taken off the agenda.
Well, I asked it to be taken off the agenda. I don't know if you were here at the beginning of the meeting. I mentioned that we didn't have a license agreement that was signed, that you might be here to speak to the issue generally, but I don't know how it could have been approved since we don't have a signed agreement. We don't even have a meeting of minds on what's in that agreement.
That's correct, but conceptually, we're asking for approval to have a license agreement with the village. We provided a diagram of the licensed area along with the legal description. So now saying that we need a legal document which can be finalized after the fact, we were asking this board to see the licensed area that we need and to basically give you authorization to get that document in final form after the fact. And that's the conversation we've been having for several weeks and I thought we, we had an agreement on that.
Well, I apologize for any misgivings that you have.
I'm sorry, what was that, sir?
I said, I apologize for the delay that you may have experienced. However, unless there is ink on the paper, this board will not approve it. You know that.
Well, no, I mean, in other means of how I, that I've done work in, you'll have a site plan approval subject to and several conditions. And quite often, actually, there's things like covenants and restrictions. So you'll get a site plan approval and then that will be subject to a finalization of covenants and restrictions that are then negotiated, signed, recorded, and then a certified copy provided to the municipality. That's a pretty common practice. So this is in fact the same thing where you'd be granting final site plan approval subject to us getting this license agreement in final form and getting it signed. And also, the fact of the matter is that if you have site, site work permits versus building permits, which is issues, building permits and site work permits, we would not be permitted to do the work that is on the village's property until the license agreement is in place. So in theory, we could do all the other work that is on my client's property and just not be able to do the work on the village's property until that license agreement is in place. So there's really no risk to this village of giving us final site plan approval. It really just allows my client to deal with their tenants and get them in the building and get their permits to do the build out inside their respective tenant space. So we're not asking to start work or do anything on the village's property until that agreement is in place. We understand we can't have that right. We can't use that area until that's done. So again, it's, it's just, we need the site plan in place so we can do stuff on our property. Everything else with the village's property can come later if it has to. Preferably, we would like to have it done sooner than later, of course, because that's really the, the front door of the building is the back of it. And, you know, my client is investing millions, billions of dollars to renovate this building. So they don't, there's no intent to leave that, that space neglected in any way at all. So we plan to do the right thing here. So with the understanding that we still need to negotiate that final agreement, we plan to get it done with, you know, with all due speed.
I believe the next board meeting is October thirteenth.
Right, and, and. October thirteenth. Right, and the, and the date that we have to get Maureen Stanley into the building to start their part of the work is the second. And so we're going to be starting off in a pretty lousy point if they don't have their financing in place because their lender will not give them final funding until they know that there's a site plan. It's, you know, it's kind of a receipt situation from their perspective. We don't have an approved site plan and they start doing stuff on the property. I mean, is that fair?
Yeah, no, more, it's a little, little less, sorry, Andrew Wallace, a little less on financing, more covenants within the lease on, on time of your turnover, that, with the lease agenda. So we're pretty far along to lose the lease over what should have been something administrative. Sorry, Phil, I'm a little mad at him. Because it's been going on and on and on and on. And it's not a very complicated or controversial thing we're trying to do. We're just trying to button up what's worked that's already been done and agreements that have already been, been made.
And at the end of the day, again, we're not expanding the building. You know, it's really just refurbishing what's been there for how many decades.
Adapt and reuse.
So I understand maybe it's a little out of order in some regards, but if this board could help us out, it would be deeply appreciated by myself and my client.
We're kicking this back to you, Gary. Well, I don't know how we could approve, how we could approve an agreement that's not in final form and not signed. And I believe, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, that that was not ready to be approved and taken off the agenda. And I assumed it was.
So if that's your position and this board adopted your position that we can't approve the license agreement, then why can we still not approve the site plan? And just hold off on doing the work that is on the village's property until we get that final?
Site plan, I don't know what, I don't know what status the site plan is. Was it agenda-ish or not?
That's correct. I was told it would be on the next agenda though, so that's why I ended up coming here anyway, to plead with this board to please put through our final site plan so we can get this done. And if the board doesn't want to see what I'm talking about in terms of the site plan and a license agreement, I did bring a truncated version of my materials that you can look at. It's actually very straightforward. Most of the improvements around the building are pavers and landscaping. That includes the licensed area that the village wants.
Gary, what do you need from that? We've been talking about license agreement for so many times. We've gone back and forth. I presented Mr. Butler with a copy of my, my first thing on the way. He sent me a copy of the license agreement that he's been negotiating with Peter Angel. I got back to him with revisions to that agreement. Probably we couldn't have to go, something like that. And he came back with some changes to those revisions. I sent him back a revised copy incorporating several of his changes. And that's where, you know, that's where it was at. We, you know, we, we've talked. He still has some issues on his side with being able to have those revisions approved. I had said at one point that in terms of the site plan, that I didn't see why the site plan couldn't be approved subject to the approval of the license agreement. But for whatever reason, I think there was, there had been some slip up in the building department, the, the site plan wasn't put on the agenda. And that's what we love.
Can I just show the board what we're talking about, just so you can get an idea?
No, I'd like, I'd like to find out. Just tell me, what's, what's the status of the site plan?
I, I have no issue with the site plan. The site plan was approved by the boards, all boards. Depending on, on agreement with the village or the board members and the mayor, if you guys are, of course, honest with the agreement, then I have no problem approving the site plan as is.
See, and I have no problem with the site plan being approved subject to the final approval of the license agreement.
I have no problem of them going forward and doing any work on village property until they.
Can we agree with this exceptionally? We can agree with his plans, tend to find you finally agreeing, that's what we're looking for. We connect us to dots, we're done.
Right, and, and construction is ongoing. So that's really the, the pressure point is that we have people working. And so at some point, we're going to run into a wall if we don't have a final site plan and we're, we're about to hit that wall. That's why.
So Giuseppe, you're fine with approving?
I have, I have no problem approving site, as is.
So we can approve the site plan subject to the license agreement, right? Do we want to add that to the agenda?
Well, the problem is you can't, well, then you have to waive the agenda provisions in order to put it on today. Or you have to have a special meeting in the future after it's moved.
I've seen it happen many times that items are put on the agenda during the meeting.
Oh, yeah? Yeah, we just have to have a special vote in order to waive the board procedures with regard to the agenda. Once that vote approves, then you have to put the matter on the agenda. So just get processed.
Is anybody besides me willing to do that?
Ralph, is there any problem with doing that?
No, it's a simple suspension of the rules by the board.
No, I mean, with approving the site plan subject to the.
I was, I've seen many geniuses over the years where it's subject to who will buy counsel. That the board proves it on stating that the council will make sure that the final document is what they need to get.
We're not approving the license agreement, we're approving the site plan.
You're approving the site plan subject to.
Subject to.
Right. We don't know that.
What's the license agreement in its current form? For the most part, it's satisfactory and has been shown to the legal committee and the legal committee has basically.
But they haven't signed it and they may have a problem. But it doesn't matter, is that what I'm hearing? Like if the license agreement.
There will be, there will be a license agreement. Like there has to be a license agreement in order for, basically right now, what was a sidewalk is now a staging area and piles of materials. So something's going to have to go back there. So we know we need a license agreement. So we came up with a plan. We think it's a nice plan to replace what was there. And it's just a matter of time before we get to a final place on, on the drafting. The issue that came up in the last week and a half is that we got close to a final draft and then the, the draft that I got back most recently had some very significant additions to it. I had to then re-engage in-house counsel with my client because there are certain things that I can't agree to without their sign off. So.
No, we didn't have, there were revisions. Both provisions that you have a concern about were provisions in the original document I sent you.
No, I hadn't gotten back to you on the most recent draft.
And then you came back and said you'd like to eliminate certain of those revisions and I, and I said I wasn't pumped to do that.
Right, the most recent.
But you didn't get any brand new provisions in the last week and a half.
I did. The most recent draft that you sent me had a number of brand new provisions about taxes, about deposit restoration.
That was in the original agreement that I sent you a week and a half ago. Two weeks ago, whatever.
That's the last draft you sent me?
No, no, I sent you another draft.
On, on Monday, on Monday is the draft that you sent to me.
Incorporating some of your changes.
Right, well, at this point, we're in danger of not ending this meeting on Thursday. So let's not, let's not have this go on.
I'm happy to continue negotiating the license agreement. But the concept is that our client, my client, is going to have improvements on the village's property. That's going to happen one way or another because something has to go back into the space that was the old sidewalk. So it's going to happen. So we're just asking for you to allow your counsel and allow your legal committee to finalize that document after the fact. I think I've made that point clear.
Does the board want to suspend the rules to add this to the agenda or not even consider it? That's the first step.
So would I?
Second.
I'm assuming he's your client?
Justin Pulis and Andrew Wallace with.
Yeah, okay. So the question really, a really simple question. What's the hangup? What are the provisions that they need to say yes to that he can agree so we can all go home before I turn into a punk?
We're like ninety-five percent on, on this license agreement. It's a matter of, it was just another turn of paper, what we've done. The biggest thing, the holdup for my client, respective, my tennis respect is the site plan. So there are provisional exceptions.
Okay, no, the site plan approval, let's assume arguments say.
Sure.
We can agree on the site plan approval, which makes all of you guys happy, go out and you probably go get a turn of samples. But I do not want to have the license agreement hung up longer than we need to as these two send emails back and. two send emails back and forth billing us, and you probably a lot more, so...
Agreed. So I'm, I'm afraid they'll be either angry if we're not wrapped up by the end of next week and, and be done with it.
Well, I'm unhappy if we're not finished in twenty-seven minutes.
Well, this I'd like to get done now, but, but we'll, we'll finalize the last little turn of the table.
Do we know what is the hang-up so that they can agree in advance that we can feel comfortable?
There were maybe two hang-ups, one of them, I put a provision in the license agreement that said, the license agreement is ten, twenty, gonna go on for ten or twenty years or more. I put a provision in there which was the same provision that I had in a license agreement with the Saks Building, which basically said, if for any reason, by any, you know, for any reason, if that property became taxable, and because of this license agreement, became taxable and taxes were levied against it, that the license that you taxes for the licensed area will be the responsibility of the building. That was one of the provisions, I think.
So quickly, for instance, we, we were, we were working that for a solid, like, for instance, Nassau County decided to tax Village property in their...
Nassau County came along and said, because that property is under a license, because the Village property is under a license agreement to a private entity, we're gonna tax it. What that provision says is that you people would be responsible for that, okay?
Okay, was, no, no, Gary, he just said yes, tax it.
And I don't know, there may have been another issue about...
Restoration that we're getting through.
There was a, there was a question.
I think we resolved it.
They won't get a restoration, we're accepting a restoration.
Yeah, I think we resolved it.
Yeah.
And then, and then there was another issue with recording the license agreement.
Your, your property, we won't record it.
Yeah, we won't record the license.
So that is done, I make a motion to suspend the board rules and place an item on the agenda. Second. We have to vote aye, and the second motion is to approve the site plan. Contingent upon the license agreement being executed within, you figure we can do this in a week or two weeks?
I would love to add that in a week.
Fine, so it's now contingent on it being executed within a week.
Executed within a week might be difficult just because we have to get the documents that, I don't know who would...
We do, because it takes a long time to get stuff signed.
To get one in signature.
Two weeks we can deal with.
Appreciate it.
Because obviously, you have to get it done by, you said, October?
I have to get it done, yeah.
Yeah, October second.
All right, I second that motion.
Fine. I make a motion to adjourn.